Hurts to sit down.
It hurts to sit down. Oh dear. I could have made, I could have made a gay joke, but I can make gay jokes because I'm gay, but. All right. It hurts to sit down. So this is the current situation in Los Angeles. And I did randomly just break out and start speaking French the other day. I'm not going to do that anymore. I'm not going to embarrass myself like this. This is disgusting language. A few minutes ago, a vehicle of three people was literally rammed by a truck belonging to federal immigration authorities in Boyle Heights, California. If you know anything about Los Angeles, Boyle Heights is a very, very revolutionary area. Read abolish rent. It's very good. Very, it's the cradle of the popular renters and its resistance movement in the United States. So everybody should pay attention to Boyle Heights and the pigs hate Boyle Heights. And because the pigs hate Boyle Heights, this is what they did in Boyle Heights. So you see them slamming into this car. It's amazing how reckless they are with these vehicles. Like you can kill people. But just slamming into vehicles like this. So they've got this, this car and like this, uh, this little T, T bone type deal. What happens next? Mind you, all of these people are US citizens. A lot of people, a lot of ignorant people on the internet have been talking, well, they can't deport me. I'm a citizen. They can do whatever the fuck they want. Why? Because they have the monopoly on force. That's why we have to take the monopoly of force away from them.
Hey, Cap, we can cancel EMS eleven and then one.
And yes, I did shave my fucking goatee off. I look horrible. I didn't even want to stream today, but I'm a man of my word.
Yeah, yeah, we'll just get that. Yeah, yeah, just right now. So dear.
Why am I so red? Because I'm black Red Guard. I love how they're like feign concern. Like, you guys want to go? You just hit the fucking car. Like now you act like you're concerned, bro. So they've spread chemical munitions and all of these people are citizens. If you like, your citizenship status does not matter. Nothing matters anymore but being in the streets. So today I've had some, I have some comrades that I've wanted to collaborate with forever. But um, they're finally here. So welcome, people, city council of Los Angeles. What's up y'all?
Thanks for having us on.
All right. So um, a lot of people like, they know that you guys exist, but they're not aware of like, of um, of y'all's politics really. We know you're radical. I'm radical. That's why you're here. That's why I'm here. But like, like what ideological, what political tradition are you in or would you all identify as like being heterodox? Like some people call y'all anarchists, some people call y'all Maoists. What are y'all?
Uh, you know, I would say that we got it. We have a blend of, you know, all, all stripes of left, but you know, at least for myself and others, uh, you know, I'm an aspiring revolutionary, uh, you know, others are revolutionaries and, uh, you know, I, uh, yeah, I'm more, I've, I come from more of an anarchist background, anti-capitalist background. But you know, I fuck with a little authoritarianism. So it's not a, you know, not, not all the way, but you know.
Yeah, like what is more authoritarian than the masses in the streets?
I'm a black revolutionary. At the end of the day, um, I don't necessarily, I feel like a lot of times people will, you say you're an anarchist. Are you really an anarchist? Like at the end of the day, like people like to put these labels. At the end of the day, I'm a black revolutionary. Um, I fuck with anarchists. I fuck with Maoists, you know, um, but yeah, at times I don't like to necessarily put that label. Um, I'm very much inspired by the Black Panther Party, uh, by the Black Liberation Army. Those are kind of like my, my guiding forces. Malcolm, of course. And so, um, but yeah, I feel at times, you know, there are people that say they're Mao, you know, Maoists and say that they're Marxist Leninists and when it comes down to it, they really aren't. Um, and so, yeah.
I do want to say like, just to, just to start, you know, for, you know, everyone watching that due to our, uh, you know, either political activity or arrests or, or participation in local politics, Jason and I are already, um, you know, known publicly, known to the state. And that we're able to talk here with our YouTube BRG that you're, we're able to hear talk with our names and faces. But this, you know, we don't tell people to pursue this, this path and you should, uh, attempt to, uh, remain or keep your anonymity as much as possible, uh, during this time. And so a lot of what we're talking, we're going to talk about, about, you know, being water or, uh, not getting arrested, handing yourself over to the state. That's an attempt to, to keep you safe and, and, um, off their radar as much as possible. Yeah. Thing is comes from, uh, experience, but also, you know, learning from our mistakes and learning from, from past movements and revolutionaries and, and trying to apply that to our own praxis. And so, um, you know, we're not dogmatic, uh, to your, to the first, uh, question you had. And you know, we, we just want to let people know that, that, you know, we're, we are already known and so that we have to operate this way. But, um, like you should do your best to, to not become a, a, a high profile target of the state. I mean, do your best. And if it happens, it happens and, and, and people will be there to support you.
Yeah. I mean, I have the same, I have the same position. Like my face is all over the internet. I've been on national TV before for hilarious reasons and reasons not so hilarious.
Yeah. Yeah. Sorry.
The mad swing set bomber. But anyways, like, so like, that's why I have like, that's why I do this public facing stuff because like, okay, everybody already knows who the fuck I am. So why not? But like, not everybody, not everybody should be out there like us. Revolutions are carried on the backs of people who are by and large anonymous. Like, nobody knows who the first dude was to put his foot out there for the long march. Nobody knows who the first person was to throw a Molotov during Watts, but matters just happened. So just like you have, um, you have public facing people, you also have to have people that are, you also have to have the anonymous masses. And I really, really appreciate your, um, your comrades' lack of dogmatism. Like, um, there was a, there's a Mexican brother from, um, he was talking, uh, he was a Trotskyist and he was putting out some pretty heavy revolutionary stuff. He was saying that we need to, we need to go back to the path of the Soviet Union and what, what these dogmatic as leftists on the internet, like you literally have a member of the masses talking communism, talking socialism, talking shit that we need to be talking about, that we need millions of people talking about. Just like brothers at the barber shop are talking about Farrakhan and Dr. Sebi and Dr. Umar. We need them talking about Malcolm. We need them talking about Huey. We need them talking about Kuwasi Balagun. Like we need them talking about that, but y'all just want to dump on the guy. He's, oh my God, he's a trot. Who gives a fuck?
Exactly.
You literally have people being shot in the fucking dick on national TV and y'all want to talk about who's this, who's that? Yes, I'm a Maoist. But am I going to fucking shit on anarchist comrades who have literally been throwing down and putting their bodies on the line? Absolutely not. We need soldiers. We need to win. Like there's a, there's a saying amongst some certain DSA right people, oh, you're allergic to power. I'm like, no, I'm allergic to bullshit. What is power?
What is power? That's a, that's a good, that's always, what is power to you fuckers?
The ability to define a phenomenon and make it act in a desired manner. I abide by Huey Newton's definition. So, and, and the thing that gets me about this whole electoral politics deal, like am I opposed inherently? Like I'm not an accelerationist, like none of us are. We don't want people to be miserable and suffering, hoping that we'll be able to stick guns in their hands. That's cruel and idiot. And we're not ideologues like that. But at the same time, you cannot allow people who don't even know what imperialism is to run around calling themselves socialists. Because what's going to happen is you're going to have fucked up shit like Karen Bass at one time, probably considered herself a socialist, if not a communist, like the lady has been to Cuba eight times.
Yes.
She was a member of the, she was a member of the Vientos Ramos Brigade back in the seventies. Like if this was 1974 and she ran into somebody that thought and acted like she does now, she probably called them a pig. But that's what happens when you allow yourself to be seduced and won over by, um, by the trinkets, the bullshit of bourgeois so-called power. Like you don't have any power. You're not going to change the system from the inside. It's going to change you for the worst. Like, um, people like AOC and Karen Bass and all these social democrats, like they literally governed Milwaukee for damn near 30 years, if I recall correctly. They built some pretty ass parks and they had the nicest, dopest sewer system in the country. But at the end of the day, black people were still getting conked upside the fucking head and thrown in prison for no reason. So that's where I'm coming from. And I'm really, really glad, comrade, that you brought up the Black Panther Party because a lot of people, like they love trafficking with the imagery of the Black Panther Party. I'll never forget Beyonce showing up to the Super Bowl with the fake bandolier across her chest in a black leather coat. Like everybody knows who the Panthers are, but do you know their politics? As Maoists, we say politics in command. So the struggle around the whole LA uprising, like why the fuck, why the fuck isn't happening? Because for one, Los Angeles is a center point for migration that is forced by the, what a lot of people don't understand, this is why you have to have an understanding of imperialism and what the United States actually does. Imperialism is not just invading somebody else's country. Imperialism is when you sign NAFTA that ruins the lives of millions of Maconal corn farmers. So they either have to get involved with the cartels or they have to come up here to be basically slaves, building houses for fascist scum to denounce them from and feeding the ungrateful fuckers. So that's why we have to have a thorough understanding and accounting of imperialism, of imperialism. Let's see what's happening. Oh, highly do recommend reading Black Against Empire. So, uh, I guess my first question is like, how are y'all feeling? Like how's shit going out there? Like we've seen y'all, we've seen y'all, we've seen y'all city throwing down on the streets, day after day after day. As somebody from St. Louis, I love that shit. But, um, so like, how, how's the vibes amongst the people out there since y'all, y'all be out there?
We are seeing masses of people, uh, they're fearless right now, you know? I mean, to keep it, to keep it one hundred.
So it's pretty, it's, I'm like, some, some of the shit I've seen, I'm like, okay.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's very reminiscent of 2020. Um, and yeah, we're seeing people, we're seeing community come together. You know, at a neighbor, uh, I live in a predominantly Latino neighborhood and a neighbor who I was talking to, he's like, oh, you see all the Mexicans out there? And I'm like, bro, have you been out there? And he's like, no. And I was like, it's not just Mexicans, you know? We have a large swath of people out there from every corner of Los Angeles and beyond, uh, coming from up LA county and us supporting actions down there, whether it be in Paramount or other places. Um, yeah, you're seeing everybody in these streets because, uh, this is an attack. This is an attack on our neighbors, attack on our community. People understand the stakes. People understand, um, what, uh, what's going down and, and, and I really want to press upon, we're hearing a lot of LA politicians come out right now and talk about the cruelty of the Trump administration and, um, you know, DHS and, and, and the National Guard. The majority of violence that we're seeing in our streets is coming at the hands of LAPD picks. And so, um, yeah, I think this is a moment where many people are becoming radicalized as we saw with, um, a lot of the, the, the Palestine protests here in 2023 and 2024 and obviously this year. And in 2020, it is a time, um, I think of, of fearlessness. I guess that's, that's how I would.
You know, I, I think that, uh, there's a lot of young people out in the streets and, and you know, there's a, there's a, you know, multi-generational. But I also think that there's a lot of young people out on the streets and, and young people from the city that grew up here that may have their parents or their family members that are undocumented. And so they're, they're really upset because, you know, these, these fucking fascist pigs are coming into our neighborhoods and kidnapping people. And so, yeah, what do you like? Just a, a study of human behavior. What do you think is going to happen? You know, people are going to be upset. People are, how, and, and the fucking, the, uh, facade of a sanctuary city, well, has been evident and apparent from day one, LAPD works in collaboration with DHS. And so like, there's no, uh, state entity or, or anything that's going to stop Trump from doing it. And the only thing that slowed them down so far is directly confronting them either in the streets or at the federal detention center downtown where Karen Bass called a curfew for. So it allows them, because one, they're taking LAPD away from being able to assist the feds in their immigration raids. But they're also making the feds send their resources to the federal detention center and not, they're still doing some raids, but it hasn't been like, uh, since Saturday, since it blew up in Paramount, um, it, the raids have slowed down. And so, yeah, what we're seeing is a lot of, a lot of people out there like, like very upset and, and understanding that the only way to stop these fucking fascists is us. It's, it's our people right here, whether again, not being dogmatic, what, what their politics are. And hopefully we can get the public education and, and, and get people, you know, understanding what's happening, but people are moved to action because this is fucked up.
Exactly. Yeah. Yeah. Righteous indignation. Like, like, yeah.
Yeah, I really, uh, one thing I really like about y'all is y'all's attention to street warfare, guerrilla warfare tactics. Not saying that we're actually like in Minecraft. One thing that I really like is y'all actually studying how the pigs move and how the people can move to counter them. For example, a lot of people would not know what the fuck a crossbow is if it wasn't for people city council. So, um, that's really, really important work. Like there's various elements that go to, that go into making what we're trying to do. Successful keeping our community safe, but ultimately, I think what's needed is like the ability to let people talk about a rapid response network. So this is where Maoist mass work comes in. Like if you're not doing your mass work, you're not going to know where the pigs are. You're not going to know where ICE is because people ain't going to tell you. Why do people not tell you? Cause you ain't with the people. So that's why like in moments of relative peacetime, AKA when the whole, when major swathes of the city of Los Angeles are not choking down tear gas and other bullshit. Like you have to be among the people. Like every time Lenin said that every time something happens, we have to be tribunes of the people. Like we have to actually talk about. And we have to actually go among the people and be like, what do y'all need? We, we heard the fucking pigs killed somebody over there. Like what are y'all ready to do?
And you can do things when you're not on the ground.
Exactly.
Not on the ground, you cannot tell people how to act. You are on the ground, you know, sometimes, you know, you can't tell people how to act, but you, you know, the decisions being made can only be made on the ground.
Exactly.
At least in collaboration, you got people, you know, talk, talking about, um, you know, a bunch of different roles for people to have. But the, the, the people that are actually out there doing the work, you know, uh, they, they are in control of, of, you know, the path that they take.
Yeah. Uh, we got a question from comrade cinema Marxism here, my buddy from flyover country. What's up, Brett? How you doing? Uh, so he says, I'd love to hear y'all talk about how, about the beginning of this and how rapid response and Unión de Barrio was responding to ICE in the past two weeks.
Yeah. So Unión de Barrio has been an organization that's been around for a long time. Um, I think began in San Diego. They, uh, they were the ones when Trump came in, were the ones to really make that call for a, uh, for the community self-defense coalition. Um, and have definitely been leading that work. Uh, Ron Gochas, who I think, believe was, uh, on Democracy Now! He's a teacher. He's been around for a long time. Previously have worked with him or had, had done some stuff with him around the, uh, bombing, the LA, the LAPD bombing of a South Central neighborhood back in 2021. Um, but anyways, yeah, so they've been really kind of leading the response and then their number.
LA bombed a South Central neighborhood?
It was the firework explosion. Do you remember, um, when they blew up fireworks?
They, they killed two people. They permanently displaced like 20 families.
Jesus Christ.
Um, yeah, this was in 2021. This is a pretty wild time. Um, and so anyways, yeah, so where it started, it started, um, you know, the raids. We got word of raids happening. That was what Friday morning early. And I think it was in downtown LA was the first raid. And then there was a second raid that happened in the fashion district from a, uh, at a apparel manufacturer. Um, and so people responded to both of those events and, um, and were rightfully defending the community and it's, um, and when things were getting hot, who did they call in? LAPD. And LAPD started providing a perimeter. Um, and we saw again, the, 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 the lie that they tell is that LAPD has no collaboration with ICE, no collaboration with DHS. Meanwhile, you have Pig Chief Jim McDonald openly saying those are our partners. Um, and you know, pushing this liberal, you know, lie that, oh, that we don't have a, a direct or indirect, um, relationships or not relationships, uh, participation in these raids. Yeah, we saw community members, uh, show up there and then, uh, the folks that were kidnapped were taken to this federal detention center. Which is about two blocks south for folks that don't know, two blocks south of, uh, City Hall and, uh, LAPD headquarters. Um, and yeah, and that's where we kind of saw the first real back and forth between, um, the pigs and the people.
There, there was just, um, you know, I, I was able to, uh, go down there and, and start seeing what was happening on Friday night. And, uh, DHS just decided to like, as soon as the, as soon as they were confronted, um, they, you know, decided to have a freak out and start launching, uh, you know, pepper balls and, and tear gas.
Fucking cowards.
And, and one thing that like, you know, I think is important to note is that people weren't, didn't immediately scatter. There were, uh, you know, the nonprofits that had the truck out there that, that brought hundreds of people out there. They tried to get people to move on a, and, and leave, but you know, hundreds of people stuck around and, uh, and continued to repel attacks against them. Um, you know, using what means were, were available to them at the time. But like, imagine you're out at a protest and you're chilling and you get pepper sprayed. Uh, that's your, your, or, or pepper balls. You know, you're not going to be too happy with that. So they upset a lot of people. Um, and, and they have captives in that building. You know, the people that they kidnapped are, were in that building. And, uh, one thing that I also is important is that this, all this, like the main rebelling that's been happening over the past few days has happened in front of the detention center.
Yeah.
So the, the people, the, the captives in there are able to see the rebelling that's happening and know that it's happening for them.
Yeah.
You know, so as abolitionists and, and you know, as, as we talk about like, you know, prison uprisings and things like that. Um, the, just that kind of spirit and you know, that we want to tear down these walls. It's not, we're not quite, quite there, but, uh, it is in the air. Rebellion is in the air for sure.
It's actually the title of a book about the new communist movement by Max Elbaum. I don't know if either of you have ever read it, but it's really dope and I recommend it. Uh, y'all should look at the madres buscadores and how they're being persecuted by the state here in Mexico. They were middle class, older women who were very conservative here, developed their own movement and radicalized by taking action. Yeah. Like, and I was, um, I was looking at the whole situation in Little Tokyo where like these people are literally just out eating fucking dinner, chilling on their balconies and they just started just going around. Like that's the quickest way. They did that shit in Ferguson. Like there were people that were watching the protests from their front lawns. I'm pretty sure y'all remember, uh, people just sitting out there, uh, press recording. Like we talked about how they fucking shot the Australian reporter in the leg for no reason.
Yeah.
I was surprised she didn't say crikey to be honest, but she was, oh, they shot me.
Crikey.
Yeah, but that shit's not funny. Like, bro, and there's no quicker way like to radicalize an apolitical person than to just fucking make them suck down tear gas when they're trying to enjoy their ramen. Like you, and I think, see the whole thing with Trump that I don't think these liberals understand. They don't understand that Trump does not give a fuck. They're always talking like you got Gavin Newsom talking about, I'm filing a lawsuit. Okay, Gavin Gekko, good job. But you have to keep in mind, this guy literally just ate 20 fucking federal convictions. He does not care. He pardoned everybody that, um, that did the whole January sixth deal.
Yeah.
Like he does not give a fuck. Fascists do not care about laws other than that, that they make. And even the laws that they make, they don't give a shit. These people do not care about anything but raw, naked power. And what I keep trying to tell leftists in particular, who are more oriented towards the liberal model of, um, of reform. And especially some of my comrades in DSA, like I, I keep trying to tell them like, y'all can, y'all can play with a little reformer shit all they, all you want. But this stuff has been tried. What happens? Okay. You get free buses. You get, uh, the rent frozen. That's dope. Cool. Like I don't, I actually do not want Ziran Mamdani to lose, but at the same time, we have to keep in mind that he's going to be hamstrung. Like this guy is going to be, we're going to have one of our members in charge of literally the fourth largest military on the face of the earth. What is he going to do with it? Is he going to make a defunct? No, because they'll mutiny. So here you go. Like, if you don't learn shit through people who know what they're talking about telling you what exactly is going to happen, then you're going to learn the hard way. And I don't want that scorn heap on DSA's head that people don't pay attention. Do any of us have reading, reading list for theory, praxis and history? I actually do on my medium. I hate being ashamed of self-promoter, but you asked. Beyond the likes of Marx. You know, I've never read Georgie Lucas. I've never, I've never read Altuzey either. All I know about Altuzey is that he crashed out and strangled his wife to death, which is very shitty. So, um, the left in Los Angeles, Los Angeles is a huge, huge, huge fucking city. It's, it literally could be its own country. Like it literally could be a microstate. So, um, what, what would you all say have been the positive aspects of the left's, of the left, left, I can't talk, of the leftist involvement in this uprising? And what would you say have been the negative aspects from your perspective on the ground in Los Angeles?
Okay. So I would say the benefits is when you have groups or organizations that are on the ground. We have been here. We have been in the thick of shit. Um, you know, for us, one of the biggest things when I'm on the front line is I'm making sure that people are understanding again, what formations are, you know, whether it be a crossbow formation, what pigs to look out for. I'm going down the line. I'm trying to identify all the pigs with 40 millimeters. Uh, trying to remind folks like, hey, do not turn your fucking back to the pigs. Every single time you turn the back to the pigs, they are going to try to beat you. They're going to try to grab you. They're going to try to, uh, arrest you and brutalize you. Um, trying to maintain, uh, despite it being a chaotic situation, a, a sense of calm. Um, do not run, you know, like, like they want to see you on the run. They, they want to see you.
They love doing, they love, they love trying to make people scatter.
Yeah.
And be scared.
Yeah. But I would say.
Somebody, I saw somebody post on Twitter the other day, like it's, um, again, totally in Minecraft. We're all lovely, nice, peaceful people. We're just having a friendly coffee discussion. But I actually saw somebody like, and if they make you run, they're going to chase you. Like they love chasing people.
Yeah.
And the thing is like, did, okay, a lot of these guys are former military. Like, do they not know what a false retreat is?
Yeah. Yeah. So, um, yeah. So I say the benefits also has been, you know, like, uh, the ability to mobilize when you have an organization, an organization that are trusted on the left. You know, we're able to mobilize different actions. And, um, I think, you know, as, I think you had brought it up, LA tenants union was able to put together, I think, uh, some great demands for what we need in this moment. And so, uh, there is, uh, you know, and then we have this indispensable tool, uh, watch the watchers, which is a basically, it's a pig watch where you basically can enter in a, a pig's name or their serial number. And you get, um, uh, their picture. You get information about how much they're paid, uh, things of that nature. And that comes from the Stop LAPD spying coalition. So there's all these different tools that have been built. Yeah. Thanks for bringing that up. Um, and we use this on the ground. You know, you'd be surprised, not, I don't think you'd be surprised. Pigs will act different as soon as you, you say, hey, what's going on, Daniel? What the fuck you doing, Daniel? Uh, Adler, for example, that was, uh,
Oh yeah. They hate it. They hate it. They did like that in St. Louis. Like they hate it when you call them by their name.
Yeah. You call them out by the name, but also then you're able to look up and be like, yo, you shot this person, you know, 12, 12 years ago. And so you're able to confront them with the violence that they've committed in their, in, in this, in, in, in our communities. Um, so yeah, those are, those are a lot of the benefits.
Also the, the community self-defense coalition that, that you brought up previously, this, the kind of, uh, community mobilization to go a, a, and, uh, confront raids. Well, well, one, it's a, it's basically cop watch, you know, that your, your initial. That your, your initial, this, everyone should implement this for community self-defense, is having cop watch. Know, knowing, uh, uh, patrols, knowing the times of patrols and, and knowing what feds i- in their cars look like, uh, what uniforms they're wearing. And so the cop watch starts, you know, that's the, the community self-defense coalition. A- and then having, being able to mobilize neighborhoods all over LA, it is a big city, like you said, but there are pot, the, the little, uh, uh, localized pockets, you know, everyone, uh, um, getting, get, this is, the most important part of how we move forward is getting to know your neighbor a- and knowing people in your neighborhood and how, how to show up for them and, uh, and mobilizing in, in defense of them.
Yeah, so it's like, a lot of folks are like, with, with a lot of the organizations in the left, like, you know, we ain't got to get ready, we stay ready, you know? And we're prepared for these moments.
This guy looks like a fucking Nazi skinhead.
Yeah. Yes, yes, I mean, so many of them do, but yes, um, but anyways, yeah, and I'd say some of the, okay, some of the drawbacks is, there are larger organizations with liberal, with liberal politics who people believe are, you know, at the vanguard or leading the way. And they are oftentimes kind of, you know, as a lot of us have been critiquing, you know, taking away from, uh, uh, the energy that should be directed toward more radical and revolutionary actions and, and really confronting, um, these pigs in the streets and more, you know, are interested in driving up their membership, uh, getting their photo ops. Um, and really like taking that energy and saying, you know what? We can fix the system, you know, we can, we can, this, this is our system to, to take back and et cetera, et cetera. So, um, yeah, I'd say those are, those are kind of the, the, what we, what we've seen and experienced.
And, and the mutual aid networks that are in LA, you know, obviously people showing up in the streets with, you know, we, we got shot at, we got hit the other night by, uh, you know, these, uh, rubber, uh, you know,
Forty millimeter.
Forty millimeter impact missiles, uh, munitions. And, uh, there were people there that rushed over to us and got some ice, ice pack on us and wrapped us up with gauze. And so, you know, those, the, the medics and the community members that show up with snacks and water, those are important pieces of, of our street movement too, you know? So there's so many different things, it's not just, it's not like as simple as, as, I don't know, it may not seem simple, but there are like so many people that, that, that play different parts. P C, you know, only plays such a, a, a small role there's in a broader ecosystem, but we're happy to, you know, be out there in, in the streets at, you know, whenever. Um, a- and that's, that, that's one thing that I appreciate. There are, there are people like us that are willing to show up in the streets when shit happens.
Yeah, we saw when the fires, uh, in, in January here, it was really mutual aid organizations that stepped up to the plate and provided for the people and were able to educate the people that, what, the county and the city were asking, what was it, Mask Block LA?
Yeah.
For masks at that time, you know? So again, it's, it's these years of people, uh, years and decades, and of course, we, you know, we come from a lineage, like, you know, we aren't the first ones to do it, we recognize that, we have to also go back. And, and you know, that's why I really appreciate the work of a lot of the archivists, um, that go back and, and look like the Coalition Against Police Abuse, uh, for folks that don't know, like they did a lot of this, watch the watchers, it has a direct line to the, the type of work that Michael Zinzen and, and other folks were doing at that time. And so, uh, those mutual aid networks that have been built out to fight back against the expansion of forty one eighteen and twenty twenty-two, um, that have been there for unhoused people, been advocating, um, for unhoused people. And then the last thing I'll say is, is, uh, the, our networks, right? We've been building out our networks and so it's very easy. Hey man, you know, slick Rick, everybody thinks slick Rick, the coolest one with the eye patch, but it, nah, nah, nah. Um, but we look at, um, these networks that we've built and it is really beautiful to see how quickly the word gets out and how, uh, how many people can show up. Um, and a lot of that was built, uh, I, I don't want to say a lot of it was built during twenty twenty, but we were able to build out a lot of that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, you read it or what? I read it, I don't know. How can we foreigners help apart from sharing info and knowledge? Um, there's many ways, you know, uh, uh,
Check out our Instagram stories.
Yeah, there's, there's definitely jail support LA, I know has been asking for, they've been, um, helping try to get a lot of people out, uh, who, who've been locked up. Um, you know, I'm sure we're, we're going to see, uh, over these come, as we've seen over these coming days and, and weeks, there's going to be a lot of people that are going to get locked up. And so, you know, uh, providing, um, funding for bails, you know, fundraisers, things of that nature. There's a lot of things that people can do that aren't just foreigners that are like, that aren't on the ground here in LA. Um, and again, it's a lot of those support networks where we, um, it could be something as simple as like, you know, like just providing, you know, meals, things like, there's just so many different ways to, to show up for community right now. And we encourage everyone to plug in, we realize that not everyone can be on the front lines. Um, I'll, I'll say, you know, my, my partner's pregnant at the moment, so she can't be on the front lines. Uh, and so, yeah, for her, it's, it is, you know, it's informing other people, you know, of building out that word.
Um, normie, uh, your normie friends, uh, you know, what, what we're seeing now is a lot of my normie friends are paying attention, seeing what's happening. Uh, and they're, and then they, they get clued in and like, oh yeah, Trump's bad, like Trump sending in the military is bad. And they're like, oh wait, these guys are posting that LAPD shooting at them, like, wait, LAPD is assisting, uh, ICE and DHS? And then it's like starting to make these connections for people. So yeah, I mean, sharing, sharing information, but directly reaching out to your community and talking about what's happening and, and telling them, you know, you can support these groups and, uh, yeah, we're going to need, uh, I mean, a- and you know, not internationally, but people around the country, um, you know, there, if they're, they're sending the feds, they're sending Marines after us in LA, they're sending the National Guard. It's unclear what the, what is going to transpire throughout the week and how ICE raids are responded to. But I would say like around the country, um, you know, th- they're doing this in LA and that means they're coming for you next. And so you either respond a- a- and organize now or like it's going to be too late for when they come for you.
Yeah, like they've already, um, they've already said that they've, uh, they've got special teams that are going to be hitting this week or the next, going to be hitting Seattle, uh, Chicago, Philly, Northern Virginia and, uh, New York City. So it'll be interesting how, um, how Zaron Mamdani's campaign and the leftist groups out there respond to it. Uh, NYC actually has the largest ESA chapter in the country, so, um, and a lot of people have been, like as you said, criticizing, um, criticizing various groups and critique is good. Like there is nothing worse than somebody who is like, oh my God, what are you doing? You're not, like, look, every type of work has merit. Every type of work, um, will be, will come to the forefront when shit's hap- right now, we're in wartime. We literally have a, we literally, literally have a dude that doesn't give a fuck at the head of this country right now. Like he does not care, he does not care about elections, he does not care about law, he does not care about any of this shit. So if your, if your primary focus is on legalistic types of organizing, petitions, appealing to the consciousness of the consciousness, like if your primary organizing is that, you're not going to do very well and people are not going to want you in leadership. Like we are at wartime, so this is when people want communists, anarchists, people who know what the fuck we're doing at times like, at times like this in leadership. And honestly, I don't want liberals in charge during peacetime either.
I mean, we, we've been at war, right? This is just, you know, this is a battle, but yeah, we've been,
Five hundred year long war.
Exactly, exactly. Um, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Shout out anarchists are, are, you know, they, you know, they, they getting, what?
I don't, yeah, Nancy Pelosi blaming anarchists. The thing, the thing is like, you know, regardless of your ideology, like anarchists are always the ones out there. Like first, first or on the front lines, always. And so, like, I don't care about your ideology, like you have to just respect, uh, people that, that will put their bodies out there. And then the, the battle and the, and the critique and the analysis, you know, that comes with movement building. But as far as, uh, people that, that don't ever, don't ever, uh, disavow or, or condemn anarchists or, or, or talk shit about them, uh, because those are the, going to be the people that show up in the streets for you, that do mutual aid. And so, um, yeah, let's, and we got people thirsting in the, in the, uh, in the chat.
That was me, that was me thirsting after myself, I'm literally hitting the tires from my own jawline, I need to shave more often.
But yeah, those people that are like, you know, that want to do the petitions and call your, fuck that, roll up on those motherfuckers, show up.
Yeah.
Put them to their face.
That's why, like, that's why when we talk about, like, when we talk about the class dynamics of the left, a lot of these people are petty bourgeois. Like this is how they teach you in high school civics class, how they teach you in college lectures, oh, don't be violent, violence never works. Um, use your words, like no, we need to recruit the proletariat, we need to recruit the lumpen proletariat. If a proletariat has a problem, they're not going to write a fucking petition, they're going to go upside your fucking head. So, um, so like, we need like, I, I've sat in DSA meetings and I'm like, bro, you've been going on about fucking Roberts rules for forty-five fucking minutes. Get it over with, vote on this shit and get it over with, so we can move on to like, ain't nobody got time for this, folks got to clock in in the morning. And it would be hilarious if we just had like, oh, well, what should we do? Um, this, this alderman is not responding to our demand, go to the motherfucker house. Like, what do you?
Go to their house, go to their next committee meeting.
Yeah, like what do you?
Feel uncomfortable.
Like roll fucking deep, like what, and, and it just shows like, it just shows what happens when you have the professional middle, middle class in charge of stuff. Like they always try to bring their own methods, they always try to bring their own fucking, and they try to, th- these are class outsiders. They want, they claim to want to be leadership of the proletariat, they claim to want to make a revolution for the people, not ignoring, not, I mean, not taking into account the fact that the people themselves make the revolution under leadership, under guidance, of course, but you're not in a position to provide any leadership or guidance because you don't know what the fuck you're doing.
And I, I think that's exactly what we're seeing in LA right now. You know, that if you saw the high school walkouts in, in February, you know, these are, these are kids from, uh, the communities i- in porn, working class communities in, in Los Angeles that, that are hitting the streets. Um, and so tho- those are the, the, uh, the revolutionaries, right? Those are the ones that are out there do,
Those are people that we got to recruit.
Exactly, exactly, exactly. And, and so the, the critique that we were just saying about these groups a- a- and how they're not able to, to reach them, well, you're not in, in the streets, understanding what is happening, understanding the characteristics of, of the, the streets themselves, you know? And, and what the, the vibe and the feeling is. Um, but there, I mean, there's important places in, in the movement, we need people to theorize and, and, and build it and all those things. But I, I think what we're seeing in LA is that it's, a lot of the people out there are young people, young people from, from the city, uh, a- and that they are upset and, and taking risks and, um, you know, like there are, there are groups that, that want to think that they can dictate and guide what is happening and it's not up to them, right? Like it's just not, you know, they don't, these groups don't get to make the calls when you're not actually like with the shits.
Yeah, when you're not with the shits, when you're not comprised of the people who are with the shits, like, how many, how many of those kids out there in the streets you think are going to fucking, or you, do you think are going to? T S L or any of these other organizations, nobody, like you can't just, you can't just, yeah, they'll definitely join the march, but like in terms of, and like, I, and I, like, I have friends in pretty much all of these organizations. But, um, you got to take criticism. Like it's good that you're, it's, it's good that you're trying to do something, but if you really give a fuck, if you really want to see this revolution thing work and you're not just saying it to feel good about yourself as you eat fruit that was picked by a fucking twelve-year-old kid at Honduras, if you're actually serious about this, you'll take criticism.
Yes.
If you don't take criticism, like if you call yourself a Maoist, a Marxist Leninist, an anarchist, uh, whatever you call yourself, the, all of these traditions are rooted in the fact that if you're fucking up, if you're doing shit that was fucked up fifty years ago, you need to study. That's why like, we don't just read theory, we don't just study theory, uh, to make our brains bigger. Those of us who are organizers, those of us who are activists, we study theory because everything that is being tried has been tried before. Some of the shit works, some of the shit didn't work. So it is ver- it's negligent for you to be running around calling yourself a revolutionary, not knowing what imperialism is. Continuing to try to resurrect the zombie of sewer socialism, continuing to try to wake Eugene Debs up from the dead. Like it's not gonna, it's not going to work, you have to educate yourself because why the fuck would you go out amongst the people? And be negligent, the people, if you don't get a whole bunch of people fucked over, then they're going to be like, no, I'm, no, we're not listening to you no more. Last time you came, you got, you got my fucking kid's head smashed in, or you led us into a police kettle, or you did, like, y- you have to do so, you have to do real thorough criticism and self-criticism, not like, it's not just like writing shit on a piece of paper, I fucked up, please let me back in. No, like actually figured, okay, why did we fuck up? What did we, what did we do wrong? Who didn't we listen to? Who did we listen to that we shouldn't have? But a lot of, America is an extremely egotistical, egocentric country. Everybody is right, nobody is ever wrong, everybody's valid, every position, every point of view is right and correct. We're all special fucking snowflakes, doesn't work that way. That's why, again, we have to actually center the development and training and encourage to take into leadership, take leadership into their hands, the proletariat, like I want those kids that are out there in the streets fucking shit up, throwing fireworks to cops, I want them in DSA. But at the same time, like, we have to make,
If your kids, if you're walking, don't do it, don't do it.
Richie, Richie. Okay, is it Friday?
Make an affinity, shut the fuck up, every day is shut the fuck up Friday.
It's shut the fuck up Wednesday.
No, but it also like, the bigger organizations, you don't have to join a bigger organization.
That's also true.
No, like, like I, I understand the use and why people, but you don't have to join a big organization. In fact, like, there are many smaller organizations that have done important work in this country, uh, over the years and, and in other places as well. So, you know, join an organization, don't join DSA, don't join P S O.
So I guess, I guess I'm the only DSA guy y'all like, huh?
In that,
I mean, you might be the only one.
You might be, yeah. And, and look, I, what you said?
Is that bad?
Well, you might be, how many, fuck, is everyone in that organization cop jackets and fed jackets? Every single, oh, sorry, ninety-nine percent of the people, seventy-five percent of the people in DSA, fed jacket and cop jacket.
See, the thing, the thing with DSA is like, each chapter is different, so y'all's chapter, DSA LA, it, it, it's, I'm not going to lie, because I don't want to hear people's fucking mouths, but, um, it has a reput- it has a reputation.
It absolutely does.
I'll just leave it at that, but like, if you go, for example, uh, DSA Twin Cities has a shitload of Maoists. Um, my chapter, S T L, were pretty cool, like you've got rightist chapters, you've got centrist chapters, you've got leftist chapters, so.
Yeah, I get,
Y'all's folks out there in LA, uh, L, like of, not casting aspersions on everybody, but just objectively, like, seventy-five percent of the drama in, uh, in DSA comes out of either New York or Los Angeles.
Yeah.
But those are also like, like I, I rarely hear shit about like drama happening, oh yeah, in Atlanta, Atlanta is,
The, the important part is we're not, we're not here to gossip or talk about DSA, it's about finding your comrades, uh, starting affinity groups, making little, little cells of actionists that like to go do things together. You don't even have to be friends, you just be people that are mutually aligned. Um, you don't have to join these big organizations, um, and there, and also just like, look at movements in the past. Ten, the LA tenants' union, the, the, also the reason why DSA LA sucks is because, uh, there are other organizations that are like legit and actually do carry the movement and, and, and have a lineage here like the LA tenants.
Yes.
Like that have been legit, direct action focused, organizing their buildings, all that. And so, can, I know Kansas City tenants' union i- is cool, and so that's, that's, that's the, the kind of shit you need to, to look into. The mutual aid, uh, networks that, that are building, all that.
Don't make fun of my fucking cargo shorts. I'm a Midwesterner, I have the right to wear these.
You go with it, bro, I was going, I was going to go in on the hats, but anyway.
People, people always ask me about that, no, listen, the hats are not a Peaky Blinders thing, the hats are not a golf thing, the hats are a ska thing.
Okay, okay, Scott, okay. Uh, yeah, shout out Leonardo Vildes, uh, we actually got pepper balled together, uh, on Friday. Yeah, bo- both of them, senior and junior.
You want a bookshelf pick? This is, there you go, I had so many books, I had a bookshelf here and the fucking thing collapsed.
Damn.
I've got books, I've, loo- look at this, massive fucking stack. I've got books. I've, loo- look at this. Massive fucking stack of books.
Yeah. Here we go.
With hats on top.
Okay.
Yeah.
Congrats on the reading, bro. Uh, that's, that's cool.
Yeah.
I'm not, no, someone in the chat said, damn, he's a read a book guy.
It's actually, that's actually the name of a fucking, um, of a bookstore in St. Louis that's, uh, owned by one of our comrades, Read a Book STL.
Yeah, we love reading. We love reading. It's hard. I, I have a, uh, my, what I do during the day, I'm a stay, I'm a stay-at-home dad. Uh, so, taking, taking care of a toddler who's almost three, it's very difficult at times to get my reading in, but I, I do lots. I read. Right now, I'm reading Against the Curse Archive by Damian Sajoner. Um, but, uh, but yeah, it's difficult, difficult. So, oftentimes, I wa- like, watching, I like to watch a lot of black liberation media, um, Jared Ball and, and the other folks that are on there. But anyways, yes, um, DSA turned me off. When I tried to get in there, it was just weird. PSL was weird for different reasons. They were trying to get me to meet them at a coffee shop to interview for membership or something. It was like shit. Yeah, I mean-
Yeah, like, like, um, like the conference said, we're not here to, we're not here to gossip, but like, I'm like-
Oh, I don't, I mean, is Steve Backs gossiping? I don't know.
Uh, no, no, no. Like, pretty much every, let me push back on that a little bit. Pretty much every org, like, every cadre org, like, PSL is a cadre org, DSA isn't. Like, you can join DSA by filling out a fucking form online. But, um, yeah, I would definitely, like, admit that there's problems with both models. Like, I'm probably DSA's strongest critic. But, um, the thing is, like, how do we, like, how do we begin to, like, I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna admit, DSA has some problems. I've literally been in DSA space after DSA space where I'm the only black person in a, in a city that's half-black, in a city that has rioted three times in the past three years. So, there are militants in this city. And I keep telling people like, oh, why are they not, like, well, people ask, like, oh, why, why does DSA have such a race problem? Because of the politics. Like, politics has to be in command. And we already talked about, like, the whole, like, what class does DSA appeal to? Uh, one of our caucuses, actually, Red Star. Um, I'm not a member, but I really liked their analysis of things, like they literally said, because, um, DSA orients towards, tends to orient towards, uh, labor bureaucrats, people at the SEIU, um, people who make their living off being labor organizers. Labor aristocrats, um, people like that. Those classes are not going to make a revolution. Those are alien class elements. Am I saying that in certain instances, they cannot be united with, but no. But the proletariat always has the fucking lead. If the proletariat is not leading, you're really not a real socialist organization because who is socialism for? Who is communism for? Who is anarchism for? And every time this issue is raised within DSA, I'm making a point to bring up the comrades. So, like, hey, I'm glad y'all acknowledge that we have a problem, but you can't address it with tokenism either. Oh, let me just recruit a bunch of black and brown people that look like me, or let me recruit the black and brown people that I'm dating or that I'm fucking. Like, that's not going to work either. Like, people will see through that. So, we have to have real, organic, working-class, colonized politics. Like, those kids out there in the streets of LA, they're not joining DSA and PSL because you asked them to be like, what the fuck is that? Oh, I'm not, you want me to go knock on fucking doors? For what? For a politician? Fuck a politician.
Yeah.
Like, that's, that's where the masses are at. Shit, that's where I'm at. Do I want to see Zoran lose? No. But at the same time, I acknowledge that Zoran is not a socialist. He's a social democrat. AOC is a social democrat. Bernie Sanders is a social democrat. AOC literally said, I don't want to build a new China. I don't want to build a new USSR. I want, um, my model is the, is Norway and Sweden and the Netherlands, a fucking constitutional monarchy. These motherfuckers still have kings. They haven't even done what the fucking French did and chopped off the king's head, but you want to model yourself after these people. So, the, yeah, these are supposed to be the fucking leaders and vanguards of the left. That's a sign that you are not a real leftist.
But it's a struggle. There is such big critique of those organizations, right? Because they do claim to be at the vanguard and, um, you know, we can recognize that there are likely people in those organizations uh, that are, you know, that are good people, that, that contribute to, you know, uh, the, 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 the people and, and do good work, right? But at the same time, uh, those vehicles need to be burned just like them fucking Waymos, you know? Uh-
I found out the other day from, I, I can't recall if it was a son stream or some other stream out there. I did not know, like, we don't have that shit in St. Louis. We don't have no fucking, first of all, St. Louis has horrible fucking drivers. Like, we'd have been ran that shit into the river. Like, we don't have Waymos and shit like that. Like, I, so y'all got, so y'all got Uber, but you, you open the app on your phone in a, in a, in a car with nobody driving it, an AI-driven vehicle. I bet you them things be going down the wrong fucking side of the street. I bet you they'd just be slamming into shit. I'm surprised they haven't run somebody over. And y'all, they just tolerate that shit? How is that legal?
Man, because we're a testing ground. I feel like, uh, Uber operated in California for a long time without even having, like, the right licenses to, to, to operate on the street. I feel like they tried to launch their, uh, autonomous driving cars without the right licenses.
Have y'all ever ridden in one of those things?
I don't, I don't know how to call away, man. I'm not, I'm not calling a fucking-
My toddler likes it because it has all these, you know, all the cameras on the side and- But no.
If I get into, if I, if a ve- if I co- if I order a car and it ain't nobody driving it, what? No, I'm not getting a fucking car driven. I've seen two, look, I, that fucking, um, that iRobot movie. I've seen the Terminator. Like, I don't trust that shit. What if, what's up that thing? What if my car declines and it decides to slam us both into a fucking overpass?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, no. I mean, yeah, I mean, the, the, the reason why a lot of people take it right is because it's a cheaper option than Uber and Lyft, but yeah, it's pretty wild.
I would never get in a fucking robot car. Absolutely not. And those things, they're like, there've been studies done, like, that AI, all that autonomous, that shit is racist. Like, I, like, my black ass, like, my black ass goes to go try to open the fucking door, is like, no, do not enter. Police call, no, uh-uh. Nope. Too much can go wrong.
Yeah, and then the amount of, you know, surveillance that's going on with those cars, yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's pretty wild.
That's fucking, yeah. The, he, y'all are like, I've said, like, for a while that when shit eventually pops off for good in the United States, it's gonna start in Cali. Like, y'all just got so many contradictions on top of contradictions on top of contradictions out there.
Yes.
Yeah, and like-
Li- liberal, liberal state, blue cities, quote, quote-unquote, you know, uh, but the sanctuary city, Karen Bass, fucking, the city of LA is literally bankrupt because Karen Bass, uh, gave bil- billions of dollars increase to LAPD, uh, a-
And then y'all was on fire. Y'all was on fire in the wintertime and she was in fucking Ghana.
Yeah, she's, yeah, she's cooked. She's, yeah, she's, and so that's, that's like the liberal modi- model and, and, um, democratic-run cities, uh, so it's like, it's not just, not just Trump. Trump's, Trump is, is bad and these fucking fascist federal agent goons are, like, causing terror in our streets, but Karen Bass and LAPD are supporting and collaborating with that.
Yes. Yeah, that's what they call liberals are the handmaids of fascism. Like, even if, like, what, you have to look at shit structurally. Like, I do not put faith in any statements that are made by Democrats or anybody else. Like, words are wind. I'm a big Game of Thrones fan. Words are wind. That means nothing. Like, what are you doing? Who are you working with? Where, let's, let's look at the money. Like, that's the shit that matters. So, when you follow the money, when you really analyze shit at the root level, you realize that, like, these people are, it's like wrestling. Like, it's kayfabe. Like, these people, they drink with each other. They go and they get high together. Like, it's, just, just like when you go to fucking court, the fucking, uh, the fucking defense attorney that you pay out the ass for, who went to law school with the fucking prosecutor and they hang out off the clock. Exactly. It, it's, it's fake. It's phony. It's kayfabe. Like, people actually act like Democrats, Republicans are mortal enemies. No. Like, you literally, I'll, I'll never forget that picture of, of Chuck Schumer and Trump in the White House or somewhere at some type of party having a fucking giggle. Like, that's what they think of us. Y'all are all fucking pieces of shit. Kiss my ass.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, and here in LA, you know, you have your Hugo Soto Martinez, there's your Nithya Ramins, your, um-
DSA LA, worst, stupidly. I think they, I think they eventually rescinded it, but, yeah, like-
No, they sent, they censured her. I don't think they rescinded.
Oh, so like, oh, yeah, so they were like, so they were like, oh, you were very naughty. You shouldn't have said that, but we're still gonna give you free labor anyways.
Yeah, yeah, especially her pushing a lot of the Zionist shit that she, she, she is a Zionist. Um, yeah. Um, and so, but we've seen that DSA doesn't have a problem with Zionists, um, but-
Hey, yes.
Um, can you imagine, like, can you imagine, and you've got, like, probably the, you've got probably the three most hated motherfuckers, hated motherfuckers on social Democrat Twitter in the same fucking space.
Who, who, who care? Who care?
But it is, yeah. What are they gonna do? Throw hands?
But, yeah, but they'll be, you'll see them, you know, talk, you know, wax poetic about their values and what they believe in. At the same time, they'll laugh it up and thank, uh, Tracy Park, for folks that don't know, she's like our resident Republican, uh, uh, and John Lee, who's another guy that was investigated by the FBI. Uh, anyways, these, these outright, very far-right LAPD supporters, like, big-time LAPD supporters, white supremacists, um, they'll be, they'll be laughing it up with them and, you know, uh, thanking them and doing presentations together and all this other kind of crap. So, anyways, all that to say, uh, yeah, fuck them both. Fuck them all.
Yeah, and like, the thing is, like, politicians in the United States have really fell fall at all. Like, these people are all just into fucking, like, some politicians used to have fucking character. Like, they used, these motherfuckers actually used to throw hands on the State House floor and shit like that. Now, it's just like, you cannot take away my National Guard. I'm suing you. Like, bro. If that had been LBJ, like, he literally would have went through the, he would have literally been in DC stalking the halls, halls of Congress. Where's he at? Where is he? Like, bro, you're fucking chump. That's why nobody respects you. Like, if I was Gavin Newsom, I would have been like, look, I, I'm deputizing every motherfucker in Compton, Watts, Paramount, wherever the fuck. Bring y'all shit, put your bandanas on, get out in the streets. The LAPD will not arrest you. If they do, they're fired. Fuck the police union. Fuck everybody. Fuck Trump. That's what I would have did. And you know what? I would have been a fucking hero for it. But Gavin Newsom, being Gavin Gekko, who can't think beyond his twenty-twenty-eight presidential aspirations. He let himself be made into a fucking wet noodle and now Trump is dancing all around him. He's like, yeah, I'm gonna take your National Guard. And you know what? I'm gonna send the Marines on top.
Yeah.
And, no, this fucking, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, no, I was gonna say that the Marine part is so interesting, like, Marines being on the ground, like, I want people to understand, like, Marines, military, like, a lot of them, when they leave the military, they're in the LAPD, they're in the Sheriff's Department. They're already embedded. They're already here. They're already on the ground. Um, uh, for example, uh, the other day, Shannon Paulson, she's the commander of, uh, counterterrorism and something, something, I can't remember the last title. She's like former, I believe, uh, uh, was a former Marine. Uh, there was a guy, AirTag Alfred Labrada, uh, who was fired by the LAPD. He was actually in the running for chief. He was a assistant chief at the time for stalking his coworker, who was also a pig. Um, he was in the, uh, I believe he's in the, in the Marines. But anyways, uh, if you, there was a really graphic and just horrible murder by the LAPD, uh, at the beginning of twenty-twenty-three is when we had Takar Smith, Keenan Anderson, and, um,
Mario.
No, not that, no, Mario Sanchez just happened. Um, Oscar Leon Sanchez. Uh, these three killings that happened within the span of, I believe, uh, thirty-six hours, or it might have been thirty-six, forty-eight hours. Um, Takar Smith, the guy that killed Takar Smith, uh, of course, Army, I think, a former Army was in Iraq massacring, uh, civilians. Um, he was responsible for killing, uh, Takar Smith in what was execution. Um, yes, this was another, another, uh, brother who was, who was killed. Um, Oscar Leon Sanchez was killed. Uh, that was Newton, if I believe. But anyways, um, that, yeah, so just to say that, that when folks are saying, like, the Marines are coming, you know, they're already here. They, they've already been here. They've already been on the ground. They're already immersed in all of our different pig departments. Um, yeah, so, Takar Smith, yeah, that was, that was one, like, it, because of who Keenan Anderson was, if for those folks that don't know, Keenan Anderson was the cousin of Patrice Cullors. Um, and so that really got a lot of the national spotlight.
Lady, lady that bought the fucking mansion, Black Lives Matter lady, yeah.
Yeah, we can talk about Patrice if you want to. I mean, uh, but anyways, yeah, so, yeah, these were three, three deaths. It says in one week, but in reality, they happened over the course of, like, two days. Um, and, uh, what should have been another moment for uprising and, and resistance here in LA unfortunately was, um, yeah, for, for multiple reasons, kind of squandered, but, um, yeah, so anyways, military's already here. They've been here. Um-
Yeah, yeah, y'all are probably, like, I've been to both LA and I've been to DC. LA was for the old, uh, uh, you, you, the whole swing set deal, but, um, probably the, the only city that I've been to that has, like, more visible cops than, um, in LA is probably DC. And DC, there's a fucking cop on every corner and there's a fucking camera on every corner.
Yeah.
Like, but, yeah, and it's, it's pretty much the same with every police force. Like, there's a military police pipeline. Both for, both for personnel, for staff, AKA soldiers, and for equipment, like, all that shit. Uh, all you see, all that shit they have out there, those fucking ARs, they were pointing at people from over the overpass, all, all that shit. Now that Afghanistan and Iraq have wound down, now they're like, they're just, thanks Biden. Just give it shit out.
War home. Yeah, for, for LAPD, they call it skill bridge, where they basically go and actively recruit from the military. So, 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 you know.
Yeah, never mind the fact, um, yeah, never mind the fact that, um, Israel also plays a major role. Let's, Israeli pigs come train here and then our pigs go over there and get trained in the arts of brutalization from observing what the IDF does to Palestinians. So, that's why, like, I laugh these, I laugh at these FBA people, these ADOs people, people who are like, be like, like, you, I was, I was gonna ask you about this, Jay. Um, you mentioned that you live in a, as a black person, you live in a majority Latino neighborhood.
Yeah.
And, uh, like, all, all you've seen since, uh, since the uprising popped off was, oh, well, I ain't going out there. Them Mexicans don't give a fuck about me. And they call us, they call us, and I'm like, bro. Like, so as a black person in, in LA that lives in a majority Latino area, like, what would you say, what would you say to people who say stuff like that? And like, there is a, there is an anti-blackness problem in the Latino community. Like, this goes all the way back to the Spaniards. Like, you have the, you have the colorismo, the whole meh, rando la rasa, all that bullshit.
Yeah.
But, um, like, it really, like, you can't bring that, that's unprincipled, kind of, to bring that shit up when people are literally being snatched off the fucking streets. Like, the Salvadorian dude hanging around outside of Home Depot or the Elote man, he's not responsible for anti-blackness among, for the whole system of anti-blackness. Like, you're basically, you're basically taking other working-class people and trying to make them atone for the sins of the Spaniards from six hundred years ago.
Yeah.
So, what would you say to people? Like, like, how can we, how can we build a firmer basis for black, brown unity?
Yeah, I'd say two things, or I'd say three things, all right? Number one, anti-blackness is in everywhere, even, even amongst our own black community, right? And you say the FBA and the ADOs folks, you know, uh, they fucking hate non-American, you know, fucking black people. Um, you know, they're African-
I've been called a, whenever I get into it with these people, they scroll through and they like, they, they scroll through, they find a picture of me and they're like, they're literally measuring my skull. Oh, this motherfucker here. He this motherfucker's Jamaican. This motherfucker from Trinidad. He Nigerian. I'm like, bro, I'm literally the most, I, I'm literally, I'm literally the most African-American-looking motherfucker and sounding motherfucker, like, I, bro.
Yeah, but, but I mean, the key part there is, right? That, that American, they're American at the end, at the end of the day. Um, and so, yeah, for a lot of the black and brown, we gotta look to the past. Like, we've seen the power of what black and brown unity looks like. We've seen it in-
Richie is not white. He's a Slav. He's, 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 he's not white. Slavs are not white, remember?
Hey, this person wants me to hop in on the FBA and ADOs conversation?
Italian, all right. Look, we got the Ethiopian, the Italian over here. But anyways, um, listen, listen, yeah, I mean, we've seen-
I'm not gonna get involved in that shit. I know the, I, I don't know. I make it the pastor. I make it a gabagoo and I get it the people out of jail. I don't know.
There you go. Um, but yeah, we look, we look at places like New York, uh, New York City, like, like, what the Young Lords and Black Panther Party did together there. Um, whether it be the, um, uh, Lincoln Detox Center, or, you know, the, the numerous fights that they had within, uh, um, uh, tenants, with, with tenants. Um, and so here in LA, it's, it's, so many of our communities are, are, like, what used to be traditional black historic neighborhoods here in LA are now brown neighborhoods. Um, and so I feel like there is some undercurrent of black folks that, that blame brown folks for, for that being the case. It's like, nah, y'all, it's the white man. Like, we need to-
Wasn't it us that, like, didn't we, when, when, like, I, I was- I was kind of shocked by that too. Like when we were in LA, like we went to Compton and we saw Mexicans everywhere. Like we, I don't know, we, we were expecting boys in the hood. But anyways, um, like it was us that, like, Compton back in the eighties, it was a pretty shitty place to live. So if you had money, like, of course you'd move to, um, Huntington Park, Baldwin Park, somewhere like that. So that, that's generally, that's generally how, um, that's how neighborhoods change. Like the people that are already established, like that's how we got to, um, that's how we got into white neighborhoods, all the white people, they left because one black person moved in. And of course, our, um, like our leaving Compton was because like there were literally fucking ghetto birds in the skies every night and shootouts and shit. So the more middle class black people, of course they left. Like, that's what people tend to do. Like if you, if you've got a decent job at the post office and you're making seventy five, eighty grand a year in nineteen eighty seven, why the fuck would you stay in Compton? That's not what regular fucking people do.
Yeah, yeah. So, so like, yeah. So the big, the big thing I try to press upon black, black and brown, and you know, my partner is brown. Um, she's Colombian. And so, you know, we're like the, this ultimate like black and brown unity, but like I really do try to impress upon people that our liberation is tied together, you know, and, and making them fully understand that. Uh, and showing them that, you know, like these, it's not, you know, don't blame the, yeah, like you said, the elotero or, or the, you know, person selling, um, you know, tacos on the side of the street, like they're, they're not the problem. It's, it's these fucking systems at play and we need to unite and get, and get behind it. Shout out my Colombians. Yes, yes, yes. Um, but yeah, I mean, it also, it also recognizing there is anti-blackness in the Latino community. Um, and we kind of saw that come to a head in twenty twenty two when the, um, audio leak, the racist audio leak, uh, that involved three council members and the, uh, LA Fed's president at the time, uh, engaging in a very racist conversation. Um, not only talking about, you know, um, black uh, organizers, black power here in, in Los Angeles, but also going in on a wide variety of communities.
They were even talking about other Latinos.
Yes, exactly, exactly. Um, and so, yeah, it's, it's, it's tough. Like in my community, there was a mural, um, there's a mural, was it, who was it? It might've been, it's been a long time. It was in twenty twenty. It was either of map, I think it was MLK and it got defaced. Right? And those things, those things, um, those things have happened. Yeah. So like, it's understanding that anti-blackness is, is, is everywhere, right? Um, and yeah, I don't know if you feel like Frank, uh, Frank B. Wilderson and, and you know, the Afro.
I've heard of him. You know, I have not read. Um, any Afro pessimism that resides within me has probably come from being in DSA. It hasn't come from reading Frank Wilderson. I love the old DSA, but like, that's another, like, like organizing and organizing a majority white spaces. That's another thing I keep telling people, like, organizing a majority white spaces, it's an emotional fucking time sink. And what I, it's, it's, it's like emotional vampirism, like it just saps your fucking soul. Like, like I'm up here and you're down here. I'm talking about how we can keep the kids on the streets safe and how we can actually like, how we can actually push this shit further. And you're talking about fucking canvassing for some politician now just stab us in the back anyways, like, and like I keep telling people, like it's irritating that I have to explain to people that consider themselves socialists, what imperialism is or why we call cops pigs. Like I, I expect a certain baseline because I'm from, out of the black radical tradition. Like before I joined DSA, the types of white people I work with were people like Richie. But, uh, uh, it's definitely a very diverse organization, both good, in both, in both good and bad ways, mostly bad.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, but again, like, we can't always, we can't always like be where we want to be. And I think, I think me and a lot of the other communists and radicals that work in DSA, I think we're here because we realize that this is the largest organization that considered, that calls itself socialist. And without, and I think that we can continue to make interventions. Um, for example, the foundation of the DSA Liberation Caucus. Um, stuff like that. I think that because a lot of people like you Google socialism, what comes up? DSA. So we've got a lot of people who have various types of politics, a lot of people who are genuinely pissed off with the system, they join DSA. And it's essential to get to those types of people before the reformers do, because if the reformers do, they're either gonna leave or they're going to end up changing their stripes and becoming something else. So, um, Lenin said that we have to work at every type of organization, like Lenin literally said that we should work in reactionary trade unions, like the fucking Teamsters. But not, not all Teamsters are reactionary, but, um, yeah. Uh, you gotta be strategic with shit.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But anyway, yeah, just, just trying amongst the black community, again, just that political, like making them understand that, that ICE isn't a Latino issue. I'm saying, you know, that's a lot of what I also see is like, oh, well, they ain't coming for us. Yeah, they are coming for us.
Yeah.
No.
Like, do you really think, like, do you really think before you open your mouth? Like, you're Ethiopian.
Yeah.
Like, um, you, you honestly don't think that like if the fucking, if some fucking idiot colonizer sees me, I don't know. Um, just hanging out a corner like I, I run into some, uh, try to bullshit with the fucking Latino construction workers in Espanol. Okay, they're like, oh, this fucker, this motherfucker, then ICE rolls up, oh, this motherfucker, fucking Cuban, put his ass in the back too. Of course, I'm greatly, pretty much be disused of that, of that stupidity because of my very English last name, but still like, these people do not care. Like they literally just rammed American citizens and tried to drag them off to a fucking black hole. Like they do not care. There was a dude, he was, um, African American, born and raised in Philly. Dude almost got deported to Jamaica, a place he's never been to. Like they do not care. These people have a quota they have to make.
Yeah. And I, I, I'm not, I wouldn't be too mad at going, going to Jamaica, but.
Me neither. It depends on what part. Like you're gonna be a fucking, you ain't gonna be a fucking mandly babe, or you're gonna be in Trench Town.
Yeah, I know, I know.
You're gonna be in the, you're gonna be at a real John Doe.
Yeah, but, um, but yeah, I mean, like, yeah, Jamaicans, Haitians, you go down the list. So many Panamanians, like we can go down the list. There's so many black people that are affected by ICE, um, that are caught by ICE and.
Dominicans, even though Dominicans, like even, even though it's a meme that I know black poppy shit, like.
Yeah, I get, I used to get Dominican so much. I used to live in Orlando, so everyone thought I was Dominican. Um, but yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, and understanding again, like just like any other fucking pig apparatus, we are, you know, three times more likely to be picked up by ICE, be deported, you know, you go down two to three times more. Um, just like, we're two to three times more likely to be pulled over, just like, you know, you go down the line. And so just, yeah, making people understand that. And when we talk about solidarity, like being in solidarity with people, like, like be true solidarity, right? Um.
It only comes from struggle.
Exactly, exactly.
Only comes to struggle, like you mentioned, like, um, one thing I've noticed about, um, on the East Coast, like black people and Puerto Ricans, of course, there's still like little stupid shit. Like, oh, like a Puerto Rican dude, light-skinned Puerto Rican dude myself, why the fuck are you with that blood? You should be with your own kind. Or a black person might say that, oh, I'm not beating this fucker, the motherfuckers don't wash their hands, little dumb shit. But like generally, they're, they're like this. Because like Puerto Ricans, like you literally got Harlem, then you've got Spanish Harlem.
Exactly.
Like we literally live amongst each other, we intermarry each other.
Yes.
Like.
And we've seen it also with the, with, you know, a lot of the uprisings within the New York, uh, prison system, right? We're, we're black and Puerto Ricans together, joining together and, you know, giving the pigs the, the, the business. So, uh, and you've seen, you see, you know, there are black people that are also Latinos. That might be surprising to some people too. Uh, it's just like.
No, they brought fucking slaves. So they brought shit. I think the Spanish imported more slaves than the English did.
Yeah. And even in like, we just brought up Jamaica, like in Jamaica, Latinos, like, right? Um, and black, black, like, it's just, it's just like, yo, we, we gotta be together.
And like, there's more, there's more black people in Brazil than anywhere outside of Africa.
Yeah, yeah. Carlos Marzella, shout out Carlos Marzella.
Yeah. Did you, did you see that movie? Did you see that recent movie about him?
I did, yeah.
Yeah, I loved it.
Yeah, it was, uh, who's the, the singer? Who was the, that, who played him? Carlos Marzella? It was, uh, Xiao.
Xiao Joy, Hard J.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, no. Um, you know, obviously we have to, I tend not to like movies about revolutions, but I did feel like they, they did a, they did a decent job.
It, it depends, like, obviously, like, obviously, like the capitalists, they're not gonna make, like Huey P. Newton said, they're not going to portray, they're not gonna portray us positively. They're going to make it like, make it seem like we're all a bunch of lunatics, but like, um, and there's the, probably the only explicitly communist filmmaker that's still living, uh, that I know of is Boots Riley, at least from the United States. But, um, but like social, um, there's quite a few like filmmakers that I recall somewhat semi-social democratic, and I think they would tend to portray us well. But, uh, yeah, the capitalist is gonna be like, oh yeah, these people are fucking nuts and it's wanna kill everybody. Um, it would be hilarious to see a movie about them, like an actual, like fictionalized account of the weather underground. Cause they got up to some fucking nutty shit.
Yes, they did.
They tried to blow, they tried to blow the fucking Chicago ill up and Fred Hampton hated them. Because like there's this, um, hold on. I'm gonna pull it up because it is, it is hilarious. Fred Hampton custo ristic. What are you all wearing to the Olympics opening ceremony?
Geez, god damn. They don't fucking snatch us up before that.
Ah. Yeah.
Twenty eight, they're like, they want no disrupt. I mean, they're gonna have the fucking biggest fascist fucking rally for Trump in LA in twenty twenty eight.
Yeah. It's a, it's a motherfucker, but they're to struggle, they're to win. If you don't struggle, you don't deserve to win, as OG said. Also, everybody that I talked to from Chicago, like they, um, like Fred Hapton, he's still like basically like a local hero up there, but and they're always surprised that people outside of Chicago know who Fred Hapton was. I'm like, bruh, he was kind of famous.
Kind of famous, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Fred, where does the Black?
Yeah, I'm gonna be up there. I'm gonna try to, um, go to the house where he was, I'm gonna go to his, um, go to his house. Uh, I'm gonna be up there for the DSA convention in August. So this is what Fred Hapton thought of the weather underground. Also, I need to get fucking prescription shades like that. Those are dope.
Fred, where does the Black Panther Party stand concerning the Weatherman, the SDS?
We stand way back from the SDS and the Weatherman. Because we believe that the Weatherman action is two actions. It's REM two, the Weatherman. We think they could call them both national action. We think that REM two is national action, Weatherman is national reaction, you know?
So, uh, for those of you who are not aware of the history, uh, REM two was actually like the, uh, before the whole Avakinite cult. I don't know if they're in LA or not, but like the whole RCP Revcom bullshit. Um, Baba Vakin actually had, I'm not on the Avakinite, but he actually like objectively has, like you cannot talk about the revolutionary communist sixties without talking about the Revolutionary Union and Baba Vakin, because like dude was there, like dude was, dude was literally an honorary member of the Black Panther Party, Per Eldredge, Cleavers, Trifle and Ash. Anyways.
Yeah, it was in the Black Panther. Yeah, he's had a couple of articles. You come across if you're in the archives, you'll see it.
Yeah, but, um, so that was, uh, REM two. REM one was Bernadette Doan, Mark Rudd and the rest of those, I believe jabronis. I mean, like, I still have, I guess I have like, uh, cause I was really, really into them, I guess, like freshman year of college. So I still have like a soft spot for them, but like, yeah, they were fucking nuts. Uh, yeah.
Revcom?
No, not Rev, fuck Revcom. Oh, no, uh, the, uh, what, weather.
Well, um.
And like, I have, I have a little bit of a, huh?
Why, why are you hating?
What's? I don't, I didn't say I hate them. I said that I criticized their, I criticized like their tactics. Yeah, Fred Hapton will tell you why, but yeah, they were REM one.
You know, we think it is anarchistic, opportunistic, individualistic, it's chauvinistic, it's a, uh, custo ristic. And that's the bad part about it. It's custo ristic in that it's leaders take people into situations where the people can be massacred and they call that revolution. And it's nothing but child's play. It's folly and it's criminal because people can be hurt. We say that they're doing exactly what the pigs want them to do. When they take people down and, and just do nothing. Play around and the pigs are prepared for this and they wipe all of those young people out. We think these people may be sincere, but they're misguided, they're muddle heads and they're scatter brains. The only way we can show them is to criticize them like we're doing right now and then leave from here and go to the federal bill and have a demonstration that's to educate, a demonstration that it is a discipline and organized, you know, and that's what we're gonna have to do and let them.
So a bit of context, um, there was this thing, it was called the Days of Rage. It was a few months before Fred was killed. Um, so what happened was the Weather Underground decided they wanted to instigate a riot in Chicago. Um, in solidarity with the people who were arrested during the sixty eight convention.
Mm-hmm.
And what ended up happening was they got arrested. They were able to bond up because they had rich, really rich family members. So they, what happened after the Weather Underground scattered to the winds, uh, the cops wanted to a black neighborhood and they beat the shit out of everybody they could see. Because they blamed the black community for the Weather Underground uprising. So my critique, I think of the Weather Underground is, is not like, i- it's not because what they were doing, like being black, being white, mother country radicals that were actually putting themselves on the line. Like that was a major reason for, um, for the split within the Black Panther Party too. Like you had the New York wing, the Panther twenty one, et cetera, that were, um, that were big supporters of Weather Underground and they actually criticized Weather Underground statement because stupidly they, they did not know what they were doing with the explosives they were using and they blew up a townhouse. Right next to Dustin Hoffman, actually. And, um, a lot of people, um, a few, quite a few of their cadres died in that house. And, uh, they kind of like, they kind of became afraid because that was actually the first time that they were trying to use anti-personnel stuff. So they, uh, they had a, they had a, they had an oops, they had an ouch moment. And they were like, oh, well, we fucked up. We shouldn't do this anymore. And the Panther twenty one basically called them a bunch of chumps. And, um, Huey and the rest of the boys on the West Coast, boys and, um, women comrades, you should never overlook our women comrades. Uh, they were more oriented towards an electoral, like that's where all the serve the people programs came from. Huey P. Newton actually criticized the Panther twenty one. I think he actually expelled them all. Uh, that was after, I actually, I like, I honestly believe that Huey got MK altered in prison. Like he was an entirely different person.
Yeah. I, I, I also want to say, cause I, I don't oftentimes like the east versus west coast because LA Southern California chapter wasn't supportive of Panther twenty one, uh, behind Geronimo, obviously Bunchy, uh, no, well, that was before Bunchy, but, but just saying that they were more closely aligned with, uh, the East Coast and specifically New York.
A lot of BLK from out the, out Charles way too.
Yeah, yeah. So like, you know, let, wanna differentiate because, you know, a lot of times I feel like, uh, the Southern California chapter gets like kind of grouped together with the West, with the West Coast Panthers and really was, you know, I don't fuck with David Hilliard, but, um, a lot of like, um, uh, David Hilliard and, and June and, and, uh, Huey, uh, and Huey's.
Never done, uh, fucking Elaine Brown.
So many people like Elaine Brown and if you read.
The writers, the, the writers in DSA love her.
Read, read, read her memoir.
People don't look into her though. That's, people love quoting her. I'm like, wait, have you, have you dug into?
She's a fucking real estate developer.
Now she is, yes. And, and, you know, who radicalized her? You know, who, who brought her to, who brought her to, to consciousness, you know, look into that. Who was the first person that she called after Bunchy and John were assassinated at UCLA? You know? Just asking questions here, you know, please, somebody do the research, somebody do the reading. Um, yeah.
Yeah, but, um, I knew this was gonna segue into Panther history. But, um.
Um, yeah. But anyways, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, the other, other interesting thing like Fred, Fred was, um, I think at the time that he was assassinated, um, I think I heard Mumia say these years ago, he was about to be, uh, you know, he was already like, you know,
Central Committee.
Yeah, exactly.
They were about to, yeah, they were about to bring him out there too. Uh, they were about to make him, uh, bring him out to Oakland and bring him into the, I, I keep saying this, but it would have been interesting to see how Fred would have handled the whole Cleaver. Um, the whole Cleaver Huey split situation. I think he probably, I think he probably would have, I think he probably would have tried to rein in some of Huey's more destructive impulses, because if there was one thing that Fred was about, it was about discipline. Like, I remember, um, I remember reading, I can't, it was in one of the Panther biographies, but I remember somebody saying that, uh, like, um, some people from, uh, from Oakland came to Chicago and they were basically like fucking with the, uh, fucking with the women comrades saying, I'm gonna take, uh, I wanna relate to you sister, like Fred threatened to beat the shit out of him. Like he literally had his people up five o'clock in the morning during calisthenics and pushups. Like Fred was not gonna, Fred was not going to let Huey just sit up and fucking snort coke and pistol whip tailors and shit.
Like, you know, Huey was, yeah, Huey was, uh, a lot of people don't know about that side of Huey. Right? They see like, they see him from sixty six to seventy one. And you know, a lot of folk, a lot of people within the party believe that the party died in seventy one, right? Uh, you know, you could go maybe to seventy three, but, uh, but yeah, people don't, Huey killed Panthers. Like, like that's not commonly known knowledge that he killed Panthers.
Uh, yeah, he did. Uh, Eldridge did too. Yeah, he did, uh, Eldridge did too, but like.
Fuck Eldridge, yeah, I'm, I'm not, you know, uh.
Yeah, but like, yeah, it was um, it was uh, I, I believe it was, I believe it was either Maria or I don't know if you're. Are you familiar with the comrade Kevin Rashid Johnson?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, Rashid literally said like the Panthers never really had democratic centralism, it was like an autocratic thing. Like you, like if you didn't do what Huey said, they had many, many types of punishment, they would mudhole you, which would basically meant they. Threw you in a hole and kicked the crap out of you, or they'd just kill your ass and bury you out there in the desert. Um, AD Dixon, AD Dixon, who I interviewed, who I interviewed a few months ago, like he uh, he mentions it, like he was um. A comrade called him up crying, saying Huey, Huey did something to him and AD was like, I'm coming to get you and I'm taking you to the airport. And Huey, somebody had been watching him, somebody saw him at the airport, I think one of the Panthers worked at the airport or something like that and. Uh, Huey called and said, I hear you helping people leave the party, you have twenty-four hours to leave Oakland or I'm a, I'm a put my foot in your ass, like.
Yeah.
He did shit like that and we have to keep that in mind, like, uh, yeah, these, you took good pictures and he wrote some dope shit, but at the same time, like. Burn your heroes, like you have to realize, like he did some, like the Black Panther Party. Uh, had some pretty fucked up shit in regards to relations between women and men going on, that women comrades bravely struggled against. Like, I think a reason why a lot of the Panthers ended up becoming anarchists was because they um, their experience with that type of high control regime. Uh, it fucked them up and they didn't, they thought that was what democratic centralism was. And they're like, you know what, I don't want anything to do with this anymore, so like you have Kawasi Balagun, uh, Shanti Austin. So many comrades that went through the Panthers ended up becoming anarchists because they associated any type of so-called authoritarian socialism with uh. With the bullshit that they had experienced in the party. What's my opinion on Don Cox?
Love Don Cox, geez.
That's the OG's OG.
Yeah, like Don Cox, Don Cox, for folks that don't know, he was actually.
A field marshal.
Yeah, field marshal, yes, and he was, he was going to be the one responsible for freeing, for freeing Huey, Huey. Yeah, um, you know, he was in uh, Algeria, part of the international part, um, yeah, Don Cox is. Is I think, you know, right up there in the upper echelons of, of, of the Black Panther Party, but the story hasn't really been told. Um, and just like, uh, another, another uh, Black Panther Party member that I'm working, I've been working on this theme forever. Um, been trying to do, dive in archives and find as much information, Masai Hewitt, who was uh, the um, Minister of Education.
Yep.
After uh, oh.
Emery, Emory Douglas too, like all of that art, all of those, um, all of that art, that was in the Black Panther newspaper, that was Emory's work, Emory is still alive.
Yeah, 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 no, but uh, specifically Masai Hewitt, he was so important and for folks that don't know, the Black Panther Party. Yes, I haven't read it yet, but I, but I want to, um, I actually gifted it at our baby shower, it was one of the gifts. Uh, for people that won, won the event, won our events, um, Richie won one event, but he was last one, so he got a sticker back, but anyways. But.
Got our stickers.
The reason why the Chicago Black Panther Party um, came to be was Masai Hewitt. I don't know if it was Don, if he was with Don Cox or somebody else, they were on a flight to Chicago, if I remember correctly. And they made a joke about um, how, I think they made a joke about how long it would take to get to Cuba. Like from the position that they were at and the flight attendant took that as they were gonna, about to hijack the plane. When the plane landed, they arrested him and everything else, and I think that those people that eventually became the, the founding members of the chap, the Chi- Chicago chapter. Helped um.
Help get him out.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
It's hilarious how, uh, it's hilarious how like one of the founding members like Bobby Rush, I think. I think Bobby Rush was in the Chicago Panthers before Fred Hampton was, but like he ended up in fucking Congress. And reading uh, the book about his um, about the assassination of Fred, like they were originally about to, I think. They got distracted by how many people were there in the apartment, but they were gonna roll on Bobby Rush next. Like they, they literally told him like, we're gonna get, we're gonna get, we got Fred, now Bobby's next.
Yeah.
So I think he had to go, he went underground or something like that, they killed, no, they didn't kill, they hurt Doc Satchel, who was the uh. Who helped run the um, run the free clinic, but yeah, it was like, it was a fucking horrible fucking night.
Yeah, I encourage folks to read, uh, it used to be just another nigger, but uh, what is it called?
You can't say that, that's a bad word.
Oh shit, my bad.
I don't think my stream, I don't think, I don't think the stream will be terminated because you said that.
My bad, brother, that was the name of the book, I'm just saying the name of the book.
Same thing with fucking, same thing with H, I can't even talk about H Rap's Brown book on Twitter. Because the fucking guy, because the fucking guy put a racial slur right, right on the fucking front cover.
It's called Making Revolution, so now it's a little more accessible title, I think.
Oh, he changed the title?
Yeah, he changed the title, so it's called Making Revolution, his daughter is still advocates, um, uh, still does book readings and book. Um, uh, book, uh, events to talk about, um, and carries on his legacy, um.
Oh, he's not dead, but like, yeah, that's like, this is another thing that I keep telling people about, like. Um, I don't know about PSL, but like DSA and other organizations, like we got all these resources, why, we gotta, we gotta do prisoner solidarity work. Like we have to, like, um, because like. We're, we're always talking about, oh my god, we're going to, we're going to jail, we're going to jail, okay, so what are you gonna do, are you gonna roll over and let them, let them? Fuck you over?
Yeah.
Or are you going to actually prepare for that eventuality? Because if you, here's the, here's the thing that a lot of people don't understand about being a socialist. Being a communist, being an anarchist, being any type of radical, doesn't matter what tendency you call yourself. If you do your job, if you do what you're supposed to do as whatever leftist you are. You are at a high risk of ending up in a position. Where you will be behind bars, at least for a temporary period, maybe longer.
For sure.
Huey himself, he, like Huey said that, um, well, let me pull it up, I don't wanna misquote the man. Correct handing, handling of a rev- revolution.
And I seen the question about Elaine, I'll, I'll, uh.
Yeah, I think y'all have access, y'all have access to chat, I think.
Oh, we do, okay, cool, um, for, for Elaine Brown, I would look into it. Specifically look into this person, their name is J. Richard Kennedy. Um, who was like a music executive, I believe at one point they managed, um. Who was it? I have to look it up, but yeah, that, this is the guy that is, uh, John J. Kennedy, he's, he's this. Person, he's an older white man who helped Elaine, um. Become what she became, uh, became conscious, um, taught her, taught her about what it was to be a black woman and everything else, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, you had an old ass white man teach you how to be a black woman, what'd they do there? Richie, 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 teach me how to be a black man. See, this is the, this is the type of white ally we need, he's like, can do it both. And then we had all eight of us to such, he sat with his fucking head down, like that's a good white ally. Alright, so uh, yeah, Huey said that.
For any white folks watching the stream, uh, I would, you know, when we say look to the past, uh, I would look to, you know, what. You know, black revolutionaries and black abolitionists in the past have uh, requested and demanded of. White allies in the struggle, yeah.
Listen, like, listen, yeah, like, listen to, like, here's the thing, every election season, every fucking. Every time something pops off, what these leftist groups do is they send, they send a whole bunch of. Bright-eyed, bushy-tailed, young, white college freshmen to black neighborhoods, Latino neighborhoods. With clipboards and revolutionary books and tables. And then they real, they get pressed and they get sad when nobody joins. Their organization, nobody signs up for DSA, nobody signs up, well, you know why? Where were you at when the neighborhood wasn't on fire, where you, where were you at when the tear gas and the cameras weren't here? Where were you at when you weren't trying to get your ugly ass yellow and black signs all over the TV? Where were you at when you weren't recording shit for fucking breakthrough news?
No, my.
That's why people don't fucking join.
Who was breakthrough news ripped our fucking video.
I saw, I saw you complaining about that.
Well, we weren't complaining, I'm, I'm, we're getting fucking shot at with flashbangs and tear gas. And the least you could do is say the video is from people's city council.
Yeah, give credit where credit is due.
Like I, like I don't want people thinking about credit, but I'm like, yo, you are move, you're supposed to be movement media. And you ripped our shit to your bottom marks on it.
And they, they, they've done that to other folks too, I guess that's your point.
I would piss, bruh, I would piss off orgs that I know have lawyers in them, I don't know what's wrong with these people. Well, anyways, anyways, um. Going back, going back to our original point about cowardice, a revolutionary must realize that if he is sincere. Death is imminent due to the fact that the things he is saying, adoring are extremely dangerous. Without this realization, it is impossible to proceed as a revolutionary. So if you, if you fancy yourself a revolutionary, if you are serious about your communism and your socialism. You're going to have to risk getting hit with fucking baton rounds, you're gonna have to risk with getting hit with real rounds. You're gonna have to risk going to jail and going to prison, so instead, am I saying we should be stupid? We should be custeristic and we should just, yeah, rah rah rah, with nobody behind us, absolutely not. Cause I like living as much as the next fellow. But like at the same time, when the masses are out and struggle and you're trying to drag them backwards. Like what the fuck, what, are you gonna seriously go up to a kid with the brick in South Central LA? And hand him a fucking campaign, a piece of campaign literature, absolutely not, you know, you're smarter than that, so. Meeting the masses where they are, a lot of people use this as a justification for rightism. Oh, the masses, they want to vote, they want to, no, the masses that you hang out with wanna vote. Those kids that are out in LA, like we're literally talking about undocumented people, undocumented people in most, most jurisdictions cannot vote. So what the fuck are you talking about?
Majority of people don't vote, yeah.
Yeah, 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 like, people, people are constantly talking about the fucking, like, oh, the, the, the decrease in turnout among black voters. Like, amount, among, I'm like, I'm thirty, amongst guys, guys our age, I, I figure we're roughly around the same fucking age, but anyways, like.
Thirty-seven.
Yeah, Christ, old man, anyways.
Unc status, people, I'm status, according to uh, what was put out there.
Well shit, I'm fucking thirty and people call me unk.
No, you're not unk status, you gotta wait till, I think it's like, what was the age?
Thirty-six, I think.
I think it was thirty-six.
Yeah, I'm big bro.
Big bro right now, exactly, exactly.
Well, see, it's the fucking LL Cool J fucking hat.
That's right.
Of course, that's, bro, I've been wearing Kangols since high school.
No.
Yeah, I was the only fucking, I was the only fucking kid in high school at twenty-ten rocking a fucking Kangol, anyways.
Um. I, I wanna make one point, you know, about, you know, how we were talking about revolutionaries. Um, one thing that stuck with me, um, about bringing it to the modern moment is Torteguita. Um, you know, the activist that, that was uh, killed by, killed in, in the forest in Atlanta. Um, after they were killed, their partner had done an interview with Unicorn Riot. And they said, uh, the summer prior to Torteguita, um, being assassinated. Uh, Torteguita had, you know, done this, this reading of, um, I believe it's revolutionary death. And, and in the interview, Torteguita's partners, like, you know, Torteguita understood what it meant to be a revolutionary. And that they were willing to die, who were willing to die in that forest, they were willing to die with their actions. Um, and as a martyr and, and as, as a modern martyr, I feel like that's something that we have to carry with us. That Torteguita knew the risks a- a- and still went through with it and that's. You know, is what is required of us, we understand the risks and we take action regardless because. We have to tear this motherfucker down.
Yeah, and a lot of people, um, like Huey said in the piece that I just scored from, a lot of them said, a lot of people, um. A lot of people, they expect somebody else to do it, namely black and brown people and white allies. While they sit back and they direct or critique or do the safe work. Like, why do, why does it, why do, why does the professional middle class, why do they give so much uh, prestige to voting and phone banking? Because that shit is safe, and nobody's gonna run, like the pigs are not gonna run up at a DSA, in a DSA phone bank and start smashing everybody's head. So they do that because it's safe.
Pigs outside my house fucking because we, we challenge them and challenge politicians and. You know, I, I catch them out there and Jason and his partner get trailed and, and, you know.
It is, it is fucked up that y'all keep getting, that y'all got cop-jacketed by my uh, by my comrade.
That's the thing, man, you know, that's, people aren't serious when they do that, like you don't, you don't get it, you don't understand.
Bro, like if this was the fucking sixties, that, that type of shit could have got bullets in y'all's hands.
Yeah, exactly, and, but even that, even that being on the ground, like if you put that shit out about us, again. We're more than, than open to have critique, like we are critiqued by comrades.
Yeah, there's a difference between, like, and I've experienced the same type of bullshit, like people have just made up shit about me. In group chats or discords, I'm like, bro, what, what the fuck is wrong with you, like, if this was an actual real revolutionary movement? Like, if we were actually in a situation where we were, we were throwing the fuck down, like if this was an actual fucking. Um, an actual fucking insurgency, bruh, y'all would be getting fucking hurt behind that shit.
Yeah, I mean, but that's, that's true now though, like when you do that shit, you are actually. When you start spreading lies.
And you, and then you don't know, you don't know who people are clicked up with, you don't know who knows who, and a lot of folks. Take that shit very seriously, as we should, like, yeah, bro, you can't just. And that's a sign that these people have never really been amongst actual proletarians, like, bruh, you, if you, if you want a job, okay? If you want a job, you work at a factory, you got a little temp job somewhere and you start spreading shit about people's kids or people's wives. They'll catch you in the fucking parking lot, like, that's a sign, these people come from rich backgrounds where they've never had to experience the consequences. Of words and actions, like, word running your mouth leads to consequences.
Well, fortunately, fortunately, you know, you know, I, I am, am from a, a place, you know, a, a working class place and so. My dealing, dealing with, you know, you all experienced, but these white leftists, they come, they, they are fucking rich kids, you know? Like a lot of them are rich kids, so, some le- white leftists that are involved in, in the space in LA. Went to Harvard Westlake, like an expensive private school and went to Ivy Leagues. Which is not to say that they don't have any role in the movement, but they.
Know your fucking place.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly.
Hey, you got a little knowled, bruh, this shit is abstract for you, you learn about this shit from books, I learned about this shit for real life.
Yeah.
I'm glad you, like, I'm glad you, like, I'm, I'm glad you've got a conscience. I'm, well, you act, you at least act like you at least have a very, very, very flimsy facade of having a conscience, I'm glad you. I'm glad you're here as opposed to being an outright fucking Nazi pig. But know your fucking place, bro, like, nobody wants to hear some fucking Harvard kid talk about why Bernie Sanders is a revolution, bro. Uh, nobody gives a shit.
Yeah.
Like, like. I, like, I remember, I was in, look, I was in school when Bernie first came out. And uh, in twenty sixteen, like when he first started coming to national prominence and like I had this, uh, I had this rich kid sitting next to me, I went to a. Jesuit uh, private school, I'm still a fucking debt behind that shit, but anyways, um, not for, not for uh, high school, for college, I went to public high school. But, and the dude was sitting next to me and this was um, like, the heart of the Black Lives Matter era. And this dude was sort of trying, oh, yeah, I, I don't know why you guys don't trust Bernie, like he's the only one that actually gives a fuck about you guys. Like, I don't, I let, yes, he has problems, but I, I'm like, bro, please, please stop talking to me. Like this is, this is, I don't know, just stop, stop fucking talking to me, I'm up here, you're down here, shut the fuck up. Cause all that's gonna happen is you're gonna get your feelings hurt, and that's how we have to talk to people, like, cause when you get involved. What they wanna do, they want you to run your mouth and run your mouth and run, I, I don't do that, like, I, I don't, I, I don't do all these, these. Long ass meetings and, but no, I'm a fucking street novelist, like. If we, if we're gonna do something, let's decide on it, let's debate it, discuss it without wasting words and let's fucking do it.
Yeah.
That's how the, that's how the working class is, like, no, why are there no working class people in these organizations? Because nobody's gonna clock off a fucking shift and then go to another four hour long meeting that's. Headed up by some fucking art history grad student where they talk like, where you can't clap because that irritates them, that hurts their ears, so you have to. Nobody has time for that shit, I'd rather go home and play fucking Arma.
And on the, on the flip side, also like, I feel like a lot of people right now within movement space, they are parents. Like, you know, it's a lot of folks without kids and that.
Oh, they look, no matter of fact, they look down, well, I don't have any kids because I, um, I don't think you can have kids by uh, 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 putting your penis in other men's asses. But, um, yeah, like, they, they actually look down on people that are parents.
Yeah.
What did you just, Richie's like, what did you just say?
Well, well, like, but, but, nevermind. Parents of all different uh, sexual orientations.
I know.
Kids.
I know.
Still have kids, brother. Count yourself out.
Just not the traditional way.
Um, but yeah, yeah, you know, you see that, you see that. And yeah, anyways, yeah, like you said, these like four hour meetings, like yo, somebody be like, yo, can you hop on a call at three?
No.
Like I have, yeah, I have my kid and then you want me to sit through what would have been a two hour call.
And then, and then. They don't even be discussing shit. Like it's just, oh, how'd you, but have, have you tried this new bar? Fucking time for that.
Yeah, it, it, there is no real consideration for, 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 uh, parents.
I should not have made that fucking joke. Now they're gonna talk about it for the rest of the fucking street.
Yeah, you know.
Yeah, one thing I've noticed is that, um, like, yeah, they look down on people that are parents. I see them as being, they see kids as being liabilities. I'm like, you were, why would you do, why would you do that? You were a fucking kid once.
You were a kid once. Exactly, exactly. Um, you know, I've gotten a lot of critique over the years for bringing my kid. Uh, ain't got time for, exactly, exactly. Um.
Who lives with a pineapple under the sea? Bald head, red guard, bald head, red guard, bald head, red guard.
But yeah, yeah, no, I mean, I've got a lot of critique. Uh, I will bring my, my baby out.
What do you criticize, bro? Like, why would you criticize somebody for bringing their kid?
Trust me.
One thing, one thing, one thing I do give, um, one thing I do give STLDS, like we actually do have a dedicated like childcare group. Like you can bring your kid to meetings. We'll set up a little playpen for him, play with little toys, color, shit like that. Like that's, that's, that's how the proletariat does. Yeah, bring your fucking kid.
Well, yeah, um.
We actually got that from New York City, if I recall correctly. Yeah, Red Sprouts, that's, that's called. Well, we don't call it that, but yeah.
Red Sprouts, interesting.
I do remember somebody getting married at a protest once.
Yes.
No, they, they had come out of that wedding and the, and the lady was still the fucking dress and the dude still had his tuxedo on and they decided to join the protest.
But yeah, yeah, I mean, my child, yeah, will come to me. I, the LA Times wrote an article about how I bring my, how I brought my child to, uh, police commission meetings. Um, but yeah. Huh?
I said, you teach them young. Like if it was some, if it was some fucking white dude in a suit bringing his kid in a private school uniform, they wouldn't give a fuck.
Is this person in the chat referring to Jason? It's like how they criticize that one activist that would bring, go to the weekly LA meetings, just bring their kid.
That was probably me. Yeah, it probably was me. Um, it was police commission meetings, but I also like during the, um. After the racist audio recording, yeah, I was very much a part of the protest that took place at city council. When my kid was, I started bringing him when he was three months. I mean, I, I had a sitting council member. Uh, when my kid was six months or six weeks.
You got the kid in a little, in a little fucking basket on your chest. Hold on.
Yeah. But, uh, people believe like that protests are like, there's these violent, um. These, these violent and aggressive places. Like there's no better place. There's no other place that my kid is more loved up on than at a protest amongst my community, amongst my comrades, amongst people that we're building. This world for. Yeah, um, but anyways. Yes.
Yeah, no, no, the baby's at the center of controversy, uh.
They turned, they turned the call, they turned the call CPS on you, dude.
Yeah, yeah, multiple times.
Multiple times, man. Multiple times.
And that's it. So that's like a, you know, a state technique, right? That, that targets black families, that targets brown.
That's why, that's, yeah, that's why we don't fucking trust social workers. Like, I actually thought about becoming a social worker, like going for my MSW, but then I was like, no. Cause like growing up, the social workers were the people that came to take us, to take us away from mom and put us in a fucking homes. No, fuck that. I don't want to be that guy. Fuck decorum first and foremost.
Hey.
Decorum?
No, I was, I was quoting him.
That was a quote.
Yeah, but we are anti decorum.
We certainly are.
We are like, and that, and that is part of, um, that is, that is part of our fight, you know, like, we gotta break.
The decorum is fucking bourgeois. Like fuck these rules. Like these rules, oh, you can't speak out of turn, you have to abide by. No, fuck that.
Or respect, respect the, respect the council member.
No, fuck the council member. The council member is a piece of shit. I think I should have his job. Get up so I can sit down. I'm on, I'm the council member now.
Yeah, come on. Democracy.
I thought, well, you're not, or, or the thing that gets me is like, the thing that gets me especially in DSA is that people, especially these petty bourgeois people, they have so much respect for expertise. Like, oh, there is, I know, like, bro, you really think that I cannot learn how to send a fucking email using this? Just like, bro. Teach proletarians this shit and they'll do it. You want to, what they want to do is they want to. They want to hoard all of this stuff for themselves and then fix it so that you cannot, you cannot do anything except by going through these methods that they control.
This is, this is counter insurgency, BRG.
Exactly. I guess I'm a counter, counter insurgent.
But yeah.
I thought you were about to have your fucking door kicked in.
Not yet.
What the fuck are they looking at?
Listen, BRG, seriously, every day I think that that is possible. So, you know, when the time comes, uh, the expectation is, is that our, our community will raise hell. Uh, when it happens.
Y'all are looking over at the center of controversy.
Yeah, yeah, we, we, we are. And, and that, you know, to bring it back to what we said at the beginning, um, you know, being, being public. And having our names and faces out there means that like, uh, it's easy. We're, we're targets. We're targets of the state a, and, um. And so when the, when that happens, you know, people, people do like, you know. You have to, you have to change how you act, but other people will, will take a step back or, or be scared. Um, and so we just try to, um, continue with our, our revolutionary practice. And, uh, you know, continue to, to state our beliefs and, and go out there and take action. Um, but you know, you should, you should think about what it means, like, you know, to put your name and face out there and that. And like, I would say it's not, not worth it. Not, not, not something that you should do, uh.
You don't have to do it.
Yeah, you don't. It's, it, I, like, if I could go back to being an entirely anonymous person, I would. Because like, people like, oh my God, you have such a big platform. And I'm like. Yeah, but what comes with it? Like every time I fucking go viral, I get hundreds of Nazis in my.
Oh my God. The last few days, you, if you search our handle with maybe like, uh, just FBI, like. Search People City Council with FBI or like keyword search kill, like. Like, yo, there are thousands of people like wanting us to get fucking snatched up or murdered right now.
Yeah, just for fucking, and y'all ain't even, like, y'all ain't even did shit. Y'all are just, y'all are just providing information. Trying to help keep people safe and exercising your rights to go out in the streets and say that some shit is fucked up. And for that, uh, people say you must needs die or go to prison. And that, and like, that's what I keep trying to tell these.
The burden we take, right? As a, as, as revolutionaries.
I keep trying to, like, that's what I keep trying to tell these fucking reformers. Like, bro, it doesn't matter if you think that Mao is the fucking cult is. They do not care. They look at us and they see red and they see black. And anything that flies the red or anything that flies the black must go. That's their position. We're all revolutionaries. And America has no place for real revolutionaries. So like if, and they're going to come after you, like the whole Zaron thing. He tries to, like, he literally cut to Israel the other day saying that, oh, Israel has the right to exist and defend itself. And like, they don't, they don't care. They're still calling him a fucking radical Muslim and terrorist. They do not care. So might as well say it with your fucking chest instead of making, uh, instead of making a fool out of yourself, shit, the fucking working class will respect you a lot more at least. Like you, like an AOC Bernie, they all do this shit. Like, why would you, you know, these people hate you. You know, these people, they, they don't bother to try to parse through and determine the real meaning of your work. You are a symbol. They don't care about your real positions. You are a symbol of everything wrong with this country in their eyes. So you might as well live up to their expectations. Matter of fact, exceed their fucking expectations. That's how I look at it. So, you know, we're pushing two hours and I'm pretty sure y'all have better shit to do than stare at. And staring, yeah, you gotta get back to your, oh my God, I'm making you, I'm making you, I'm taking you away from your child.
You're fine, you're fine. Uh, it's nap time. I wanted to say there was, um, somebody that wanted more information about, uh, Elaine Brown. Um, Slank on Twitter.
Oh yeah, love him. I'm gonna, I gotta get, I'm glad you reminded me. I gotta get him on one day.
He's put together some great, um, threads on exposing Elaine Brown. Um, Joy James has, uh.
She was sued by, uh, uh, Elaine Brown actually sued Joy.
Yeah, her and.
I learned about this, I learned about this from an article that, uh, from an article that Joy wrote criticizing me.
Yes, right. Oh, criticize you?
Yeah, yeah, Black Mike Mal, Black Red Guard. Yeah, she criticized me a few years ago. I never responded to that article. Maybe I should.
Okay, um, but yeah. And Geronimo Pratt was another person that, that was out there. You, you can go through and look, uh, it's like kinda. If you go, if you go and talk to many of the, the veterans of the Black Panther Party, um. Yeah, they can, they, they'll tell you, they'll tell you about Elaine Brown. About nine out of ten will tell you about who she, who she was and how she existed within the Black Panther Party. And there was very awful sisters, um, I think even Kathleen Cleaver at one point, uh, also. Rightfully, uh, uh, exposed Elaine Brown. But, um.
Yeah, she has, she has some fucking, uh, some fucking glowy, she has some fucking glowy ass, uh, connections from top, like just in her family.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, she glows. Yeah, she glows.
She had a child with, uh, Messiah Hewitt, who I brought up earlier.
Oh, yeah.
Cause she was also here in LA. Yeah, she's, she's been, she was a part of, uh, a lot of different big moments within, um, LA chapter and. And within the party. Um, but yeah.
Now, another, another one is, uh, Richard Ioki, the guy who literally, um, literally sold the Panthers their first guns. And they didn't find out about this till after he was dead. Like they spent, we spent decades learning about this dude as a revolutionary example of black Asian solidarity. Then it comes out, he's a fucking paid informant.
Yeah.
But, yeah, that's why, and like, I, I take the Bolshevik method. Like if you're big enough, if you do your job, you're gonna be, you're gonna eventually be infiltrated. Like it's basically, it's gonna happen. Like the Bolsheviks, they're infiltrating so many fucking times. So the thing is to actually root yourself in the masses. And what happens, what, what's happened with a lot of orgs is that they spend all their time on a fucking informer hunt, on a fucking witch hunt. Like what happened with the Black Panthers, they literally started killing each other over these shit.
Yeah.
So the thing is to root yourself thoroughly in the masses and fix it so that, okay, if they do. Arrest our whole central committee, we can, we can keep shit moving.
Yeah.
Or maybe, maybe don't have an easily accessible central committee in the first place. Maybe we should be water, be autonomous.
Look in, yeah, Black Liberation Army, you know, the cells that they, uh.
Yeah, I'm a big fan of the cell model. Like, i- it's always seems stupid to me. Like that shit made sense. And I, I say this as a Marxist little in his mouth. Like that stuff made sense before the fucking internet. Like they had to actually like read your paper and attend your meetings in person. But now you're taking pictures of your central committee, putting them on the internet and you can find out anything about anybody on the internet.
Yeah.
And like, if you actually develop a revolutionary party that poses a threat to the actually existing order. And you have a literal head of a pyramid that can be, check. That's kind of dumb, man.
This, I mean, PCC is a small org, but you know, they're coming after us like this. It's an attempt to fucking. To, to shut us down and, and stop us and, you know, all of that. Um. Yeah, it's, it's definitely.
The only reason, like the only reason, the only reason that these orgs haven't gotten, haven't gotten fucked is because they're not doing anything of important.
And that was the big, that was the big thing between the, you know, Black Panther here in LA and Southern California Black Panther Party and the, the United Slaves, us organization. Uh, and even, I, I think.
United shit, yeah, united shitheads.
Yeah, um, but yeah, Fred Hampton talked about like, you know, look, look at what we have to face. Our, our. Um, our headquarters are being, you know, fucking ransacked. Our, our breakfast programs are being, you know, raided and all this other kind of stuff. We're, we're facing all.
If Fred Hapther gave that speech today, he would be canceled so fucking hard.
Hundred percent. Um, so many people would be canceled. Um, but yeah, yeah.
Yes, DSA does have chapters and have degrees of autonomy. That's why I like, it's, it's wrong. A lot of people don't understand DSA. Okay, like the thing with DSA is that there's a lot of room for ideological debate. Like all you have to do to be a DSA member is agree with the platform. Which anybody can be with the platform. But like, it's not a cod, for example, at PSL, if you say. I'm pretty sure we all know how democratic centralism works. You break line, you get expelled. Okay, DSA ain't like that. Like you literally have to put in work to get expelled out of DS, to get put out of DSA. So. DSA chapters do have relatively decent degrees of autonomy. Like for example, in St. Louis, if we want to implement a, um. Implement, say, a bail fund. Okay, we would not have to consult with national or ask national, is that okay? Um, so, yeah, we do have a lot of autonomy. That's why I advise comrades to not paint DSA. With a broad brush. Like there's so many ideological trends in this organization. I understand that people within DSA have cop jacketed y'all and that is shitty, shitty, shitty thing to do. But you also have plenty.
Practice, BRG. It's common practice with different chapters. It's not just LA. It happens all the time. And, and the fact that it can't be rooted out is an issue. Because that means that you are not serious about your work in such a way. That you have to actually protect yourself from the pigs.
I'll tell you this, I'll tell you this, if I find out anybody in DSA STL is cop ja, is, is cop jacketing, they will be dealt with extreme prejudice.
That's the thing though, it's like, it's not just, you know, it's leadership.
We don't do, like, and then like St. Louis is actually like, St. Louis has actually been through three rebellions, like we know better.
Yeah, yeah, but like here, like from what we've experienced, uh, from DSA LA, it's, it's, it's not like just, you know. Rank and file, it's like their leadership, elected leadership that are doing this. Um. A, and, and you know, I also want to note, I mean, I'm still good on time. If you're still good on time.
I'm good.
Okay, yeah, 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 that we had, uh, one of our members, um.
I know y'all, I know y'all got into it with them over the whole SEIU thing at, uh, UCLA.
Was S, yeah, was SCA, no, it was, uh, UAW.
Oh, UAW.
Yeah, but, uh, again, which is fine. If you crit, want to critique our analysis of the situation, fine, but just don't fucking fed jacket us.
I'm not gonna guess. Yeah, I mean, yeah, that, that's, like, that's why I tell everybody to read combat liberalism and actually live by that shit. Like. We have, like, people act like people hate DSA for no reason. People do not hate DSA for no reason. People hate DSA because DSA does have a record. Certain people or in many cases like y'all mentioned, it's a systemic thing of engaging in unprincipled practices, like cop jacketing other activists. Or, um, trying to co-opt or wreck other people's work. So I'm not saying y'all are wrong at all. Like I've heard so many fucking horror stories. And gone through so much shit since joining this org. It's not funny. Like anytime somebody tells me that, I tend to believe it. So I'm not saying y'all are lying or anything. Like I'm pretty sure, and matter of fact, I know y'all ain't lying because I saw that shit happen.
Exactly, exactly. But it's, it's beyond that. Like I want to also say that Albert Carrato, uh, his sister Meli Carrato was killed. Uh, was murdered by the LAPD in two thousand eighteen. Um, I think you could say was like one of the most, um. Uh, prominent LAPD murders over the last ten years. And so he ran for city council district thirteen. Uh, he ran against Hugo Soto Martinez, who is, you know, the DSA, uh, DSA's. Homeboy, um, and they infiltrated his campaign.
They infiltrated somebody's campaign?
Correct, yes.
To wreck it, to ruin, to fuck it up?
Uh, to, in order to keep, well, at least what we can say of what we know. They were attempting to keep tabs of the events and, and, uh, you know, emails and, and things that were going on. Campaign related. Uh, unclear of like, you know, we did, we can't say for certain what, what they were, uh, doing. They're certainly attempting to, to gather information on, on the campaign.
That's fucking dirty.
Even, even DSA LA's own, uh, endorsement process of Hugo Soto Martinez was, was, uh.
Rigged.
Was rigged, yes, uh, by, I believe, was it Janet?
Just one person voted, uh, like eighty times. I maybe, it may have just been thirty or fifty or. And, but it could have been eighty. It's, it's some fucking number that one person did.
Wow.
So it's, it goes beyond like, you know, that's, that's our brother. Like you, it goes beyond. So it's, it goes beyond like, you know, that's, that's our brother, like you, it goes beyond, and then it also is like how they show up here in LA. Um you know, yes, a- and how they are ninety-nine percent of the time will not critique or call out, for example, Nithya Raman, who was um uh one in twenty twenty um and who was, you know, considered to be their candidate, uh she voted for a budget that increased the LAPD's budget um each and every single time until last year, where she voted against the budget. Um and only because Unicef Hernandez, the year before, it was the sole vote against it, and she felt like she was compelled to join in the progress, what is called the progressive movement of city council.
But if you're, if you're calling yourself a democratic socialist, you should automatically be on the progressive side, like you shouldn't have to be compelled, like that's what, that's, that's a lot of my critique around um, around the whole fucking Zaron and all these other people, like why do you keep allowing these people to make you say that Israel has the right to exist? Like, why do you keep allowing yourself to be like, we already have shitty piss poor relations with the Palestinian solidarity movement? Why do you keep allowing people to make an ass of you in this fashion? And my only conclusion is that these people really don't give all that much of a shit about DSA in the first place. Like, they'll use our free labor, they will definitely use our free labor, they will definitely use our name, but when it comes to the actual um the actual sausage ma- making process of governing, they don't, like they don't consult with us, they don't ask us shit. I- it's a fucking cuck relationship, like it's different if you're actually seen as being a joint power holder, but you know I'm not, I'm not somebody's fucking street D.
Anyways, uh you know, for anyone wondering, the only reason that we're able to spend two hours yapping right now is because we both got shot by LAPD with less lethals on Monday night, and it's uh incredibly uh difficult to move for both of us at this moment, and uh.
Walking wounded.
Yeah, so the, you know, usually uh, you know, we'd be preparing to to, you know, go out uh but uh, what's the guy's name? Um uh Mr. uh Linton, Rick Linton.
Rick Linton, yeah.
LAPD officer Rick Linton.
Who's gone viral.
Has uh like probably twenty million views. This motherfucker had a less lethal pointed at us while we're walking down the sidewalk, uh like three to five feet away. And you know, sometimes I can tell with these guys.
This psychotic bald looking motherfucker?
Yeah, what the, what many on the internet are called, this Hills of Eyes guy, or what was, what was the other one that they compared him to? I can't remember, anyway.
What did they sign these, you know, a lot of those LAPD cops back in the day were literally imported from the south.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Literally, they literally went down to Mississippi and Alabama and recruited the fucking rednecks hanging around at the general store. Buddy, you wanna be a Paulase, and that's, they, they ended up with motherfuckers like this. This dude is inbred. This family tree's a fucking circle.
But yeah, no, this motherfucker, yo, we were walking down the street and he had it raised, he's on a uplifted platform at the LAPD headquarters. Has it raised at our heads and a- and like, you know.
You know, one thing I've noticed, why do every regular, this is a regular fucking cop. Why the fuck is he making a hundred and fifty grand a year almost?
That's, 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 that's an average LAPD salary.
Well, and of course, the living in LA is high as fuck, damn, bro.
He doesn't live in LA.
Oh, yeah, none of them.
Ninety, I I think it's like ninety-four percent of LAPD pigs don't even live in LA. Although, part of the budget is for new recruits, for folks that don't know, here in LA uh if you are recruited and you join the LAPD Academy, uh the city provides you with two years stipend uh for uh a thousand dollars a month, you get a stipend for the first two years of your time with LAPD uh to help offset living costs.
Yeah.
And it was uh, in this money, this um, it was first actually funded by the LA police, if I remember the LA Police Foundation funded it, or no, it was, it was Steve Soboroff, who was a sitting police commissioner at the time. Uh he put together, basically, he wanted to put together this program, he got funding from a lot of different organizations. Um a lot of Republicans, as you can imagine, and um I think the LA Police Foundation had given to it, but yeah, it started as this program that was funded by, and as does many different things, uh funded by uh philanthropists and other, and other organizations, and was eventually becomes after a year or two then becomes a line item, a budget line item for uh the LAPD.
Jesus. But um. And then, so after we got shot, our friend and lawyer Shakir went over to get the guy's information because he had ripped the name tag off his helmet, and this fucking unhinged asshole fucking shot our friend Shakir on video.
Lawyer?
Uh he's not necessarily our lawyer.
He's been my lawyer before.
That's true, he has been also my lawyer before, um but uh uh he, he went over and said, give me your name, give me your badge number, and this pig's like, you know, if you don't get out of here, I'm gonna shoot you with forty millimeter.
Yeah, that's the one who got shot in the fucking dick.
Almost, yeah.
Almost, yeah, he almost, he also got like very close to his groin, um twice. Um sorry, so somebody said he's Hispanic, yes, he is Mexican American, he's written a book. I don't, the book is Why Is Water Wet or some shit like that, it's some type of fucking pig propaganda.
Funny thing, the funny thing about Hispanics is that all three of us could be different types of Hispanics.
Yes, yes.
I could be Dominican, I could be Cuban, you could be Dominican, Richie could be Argentine.
Yes.
Yeah, shout out Manu Ginobili.
But yeah, and then as, as we were, so we didn't want, as we were recovering, and then we were able to get back um back over there Richie and I are asking for a stereo number and his name, and this pig is fucking looking to fire at us again, we're literally hiding behind cars. And again, this whole time, the 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 big reason why we confronted him, and I wouldn't say confront, yeah, we did confront him, was because literally as people.
From them, we were just walking by and we had the gun raised at us.
Yeah, because he was looking and he was a- as the, there were people in front of us.
He was, he was hunting y'all.
Yes, yes.
He wanted, he wanted to, he wanted to fuck y'all up.
We put our hands up, and I don't, I don't uh necessarily like telling, like I, we see a lot of people on the front lines putting their hands up, they're gonna shoot you no matter what.
Yeah, that's like that, Dave, yeah, that's what that, that fucking hands up, don't shoot shit.
Yeah, or the peaceful protest, please stop saying that, that protest, they don't give a fuck, um they're gonna shoot you, they're gonna beat you, they're gonna uh.
Peaceful protest, eat my asshole, anyways.
Oh my god, but yeah, but so we had our hands up again to show, um and this, and the whole time we're saying it's not illegal to be on the sidewalk, we're allowed to be on the sidewalk, there hasn't been a dispersal order been given, there isn't, we weren't even in like the active, an active uh 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 like protest.
Tension zone, like.
Yeah.
They were just on top of the fucking headquarters.
And this happened, yeah, this happened at LAPD headquarters, and so, you know, we're saying, yo, what the fuck are you gonna shoot us? Like, why the fuck are you gonna shoot us? Um but, and there's deeper, there's deeper levels to it, and I think we'll reveal more here soon, but one of the pigs that was actually there on that platform was a pig that has targeted us in the past, and he is Deputy Chief Alan uh Hamilton, a a black pig uh who we've had many different encounters with, um he used to be Deputy Chief of the Valley Bureau. Uh and in twenty twenty, he was the main guy that was on the ground, the main pig that was on the ground uh overseeing protests that were outside of the mayor's house, uh for various reasons, whether it be the cancel rant protest that uh PCC was initially part of alongside other organizations, and where where we were birthed, but also uh he was there when we had uh, there were other protests um throughout the year. Um so yeah, this is the guy who's targeted us, this is the guy who runs the detective bureau right now. Uh for folks that don't know, last year, my partner was rear-ended by a LAPD detective in a um in a uh, what are the cars called? In a, it was a, no, it didn't have the 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 police, not in a police car, it was in a
Unmarked.
Unmarked vehicle, sorry, yes, thank you.
I think it was a Civic.
I got daddy brain, um an unmarked, an unmarked car, rear-ended, um but yeah, anyway, so this is someone who has it out for us, and coincidentally was there giving direction to this pig. Um and you can see him in the background of that video that went viral, you can see him uh providing instruction to him. Um but anyways, they know when we're on the ground too, um so I do think that that this was, that yeah, we were, we were shot on purpose, uh that this was targeting, um again, because, for example when we get on the ground, there are pigs, they're notified, um oftentimes they'll say our names, for example, when we're on the line uh Sunday Sunday evening, one pig was.
Jordan, come out and play.
How you doing, Jason? Uh as if that was gonna.
My name was George. Jason Jordan.
My name was Jordan, two, three, two, three, fuck Michael Jordan, though, anyways.
Uh LA, oh fucking sectarian LA motherfucker, don't get mad.
I'm actually from the east, east coast anyway, but I I do refer.
Either way, you just salty.
George is asshole, but anyways.
He is, and he's being invested fucking private prisons.
Yes.
That's a fake, that's fake news, BRG.
Is it?
That up, brother.
Okay.
Oh, that's a different, it's a white Michael Jordan?
Yep.
Oh, but yeah, he's still.
Also, I don't wanna come off as defending Michael Jordan, I'm just saying, I know, I know that that's a common thing that people say about Michael Jordan and I was like, let me go look this up, if I say it, and then I was like, oh, this is not, this is not.
Oh yeah, we got caught up, we can, we can, we can correct, correct the record.
It's okay.
Not as, he's not as much of a, she's not as much of a shitbag as fucking uh Charles Barkley, but.
Oh my god, Charles Barkley, Isaiah Thomas, Isaiah Thomas during the uprising in twenty.
Shaq is the worst.
Yeah, Shaq.
He's, he's literally, he's, I I consider him to be a fucking pig at this point.
Yeah, he is a pig, he's literally, he's, he's a reserve pig, yeah, he's a reserve pig, he's been on since twenty sixteen. I mean, two thousand six, and he also did, uh yeah, we had a, him front and center at LAPD, uh it's like LAPD and then uh port, port, port pig.
Thing that, that just shows how money changes you, like how money and letting, letting fame go to your head changes you, like didn't all of these guys grow up fucking poor as fuck?
Yes, but for Shaq specifically, he comes from, his, his parents were in the, his dad was in the military.
Oh, well, that explains a lot, too.
Yes, no, he's, he's always been this way. Unfortunately, I I grew up, I, you know, I I think a lot of kids grew up and they enjoyed him because his personality and everything else, I had Shacks growing up, um but it wasn't.
He was, he was, he was every fucking, he was in every fucking commercial.
Yeah.
Video game, every fucking thing.
Exactly, um but yeah, Isaiah Thomas was like big up in the uh uh the sheriff's department during the twenty twenty uprising. Um Magic Johnson, yeah, you go down the line, these are all, all frauds.
That's why you don't get your politics from fucking people who make a living by chucking a ball around, huh?
Yeah, yeah, um.
Craig Hodges, does everyone know about Craig Hodges?
What happened?
He uh, he was uh uh, I believe, three-time uh three-point uh contest champion on on the Bulls in the early nineties, uh and when they went to uh the White House, I believe it was uh George Bush, the the first.
Um.
Poppy Bush.
And uh Craig Hodges were, wore dashiki and and handed uh, I believe he's an anti-imperialist and gave him like a note, uh no condemning the US's uh foreign uh fucking relations. And uh Craig Hodges got blackballed from the league after uh.
Imagine Poppy was like, imagine Pop was like, don't bring that guy back, I think he was high on crack. My Poppy, my, my Bush senior voice is not what it once was. I used to be able to do a really, really good impersonation of him, but I can't anymore. Don't bring that guy back, and matter of fact, don't ever let him play basketball again, there's something wrong with that guy.
Yeah.
It is funny how people think that, it's funny how people think that like the Bush family are literally a bunch of Yankees from Connecticut playing, cows playing as cowboys.
Hmm.
All right, BRG, I think we gotta, we gotta, we gotta wrap.
Go, 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 stop neglecting your children.
No, moms at home, no, no neglecting.
Well, don't get hit with, yeah, don't get hit upside and head with a fucking frying pan.
Never, that wouldn't happen, frying pans only for uh, for fucking pork chops, baby.
Frying pork chops and smashing Jay, smashing Jay's head.
No, no, no.
No, no, we, we like, we like to eat, but pigs are her own, so, you know.
You're Muslim, Richie?
Uh. Inshallah, we get him, you know, I'm not, uh uh.
We got enough white, a new white boy has converted to Islam.
What is it, who's that rapper, Brother Ali? Brother, right, right here, shave the head, you know, um.
There's a whole, you know, there's a whole, there's a whole nation of white Muslims, they're called Bosnians, St. Louis has thirty-five thousand of them.
Yes, a dual.
Dope, dope ass food, best lamb I've ever had.
Yeah, Dua Lipa is Muslim. Um.
No, you need to get.
She's a, she's a, she's Albanian.
Albanian, yeah, I know, I know, and I'm, I'm not trying to, you know, cause any drama here, but I'm just saying, the white Muslims, they're out there, they're out there. Yeah, but hopefully, inshallah, we get him over, you know, uh I'm making my way.
It's a thing, it's a thing.
I need to read the Quran, reread the Quran again and make my way back into Islam. Um but yeah, but we are, yeah, fuck pork, you know, no pork, I'm vegan, also.
Fuck pork, human and animal, but with that, um thanks for coming on, guys, I've wanted to do this for literally forever.
Yes.
It's been a pleasure and stay safe and don't, if, hopefully you two move out of the category of walking wounded soon and are able to rejoin the struggle.
We'll be out in the streets probably this weekend.
All right, fuck the pigs and viva tortuguita, all right?
Viva tortuguita, viva la, viva el pueblo, viva el pueblo de Los Angeles en la lucha.
Peace.